Come on, y'all, let's get a break so we don't gotta keep doing it, man.
Dreams. Everybody got better days. Reality. Everybody got worse today. Dreams. Everybody wants to be free. Dreams, 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 dreams. Everybody got better days. Reality. Everybody got worse today. Dreams. Everybody wants to be free. Dreams, 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 dreams.
Atrevete, si tan solo una vez. Atrevete, a buena hora yo te deje. Tanto tiempo ocado, me voy ahora, te veo después. Pero no me duele tanto, fue de la fiesta ya te boteé. Atrevete, si tan solo una vez. Atrevete, a buena hora yo te deje. Atrevete, y tu careta se va a caer. Atrevete, mi hermano, pues aquí nadie te quiere ver. Sé que tú te colaste, estoy seguro no te invité. Oh, para besarte, ahora más que nada se quiere echar pa' allá. Atrevete, y tu careta se va a caer. Atrevete, pues aquí nadie te quiere ver.
No te compliques.
No te compliques, en la vida.
Ya, no te lo dijiste.
Sigue yo tú, yo continuo a tu gira.
No te compliques.
Que no te invito a la fiesta mía.
Ya, no te lo dijiste.
Echar pa' allá, tú con tu cobardía.
No te compliques.
No te vistes que no van.
Esperando que no te quites.
Pero dice la sesión, y también yo parar.
No te compliques.
Déjame ir con tu pierna.
Esperando que no te quites.
Mayor, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane, councilmember Barry, councilmember Clay, councilmember Simmons, councilmember Williams.
Councilmember Austin Lane was here just a moment ago. I understand councilmember Barry will not be joining us this evening. But we do have a quorum of the council. We're going to begin with council comments or announcements. Are there any council comments or announcements? Bruce?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to our attention a situation that developed at the end of last week and over the weekend where the city was going to be taking out a tree. And I had a request from some residents that they be afforded more advanced notice because they were caught unawares and wanted more information. One of them suggested that the city might follow the posting rules that citizens have to follow. And I know there are a number of ways in which the city does not go through some of the same procedures for posting of taking down trees that residents do because the arborist has already determined things. But I think it's important for there to be proper notification to people so that they don't feel like something's going to happen on Monday and they just find out on Friday. So if we need to do anything, either the council or the manager needs to do anything to change any procedures so that we do follow a much longer posting period for trees in the city right of way, that would be appreciated.
I'm glad you brought that up, councilmember Williams. I also had a number of people contact me about the same situation. It's my understanding that when a tree is removed in a residential area, even if it's on the city right of way and the city has the power to remove it, that we were going to take, make special efforts to notify the residents. I understand in this particular case there was contact with one of the residents, but there were a number of residents on the block who were concerned about it. And the council basically requested that there be a procedure to contact the residents in the area. And in this particular case, probably leafleting the block would have been an appropriate thing to do. But I agree with councilmember Williams, and I would be happy to put it on the agenda if the city manager feels that there needs to be more clarity. But the council, I think, has already established that there needs to be, you know, communication with residents in that situation. And I would like to leave it that the city manager will let us know whether she feels we need to take additional policy action or whether she feels that she has the authority to put together a procedure and what that would be. So I will leave it up to you to let us know. Colleen?
Let's see, trash, leaves, and thank yous. Trash. Now, I know that we have turned over the Eastern Avenue, New Hampshire issue to the Health Department. And the result of that has been that they've hauled away the trash can and are having it steam cleaned, and that's been going on for two weeks and they haven't brought it back. But now, there's a huge dump pile of office garbage. And I noted that they cleaned the site this weekend, but nobody removed any of the garbage, and it's now been there for 10 days. So is that us, or does that continue with the county?
I can review it with the Abacole Department, councilmember Clay. It probably falls under both a health consideration as well as possibly a code enforcement action. So I will talk to Ms. Daines tomorrow, and we'll see if we can just tackle it from both avenues.
Okay. I talked to the business owners there, and they say that it's not their responsibility to remove it, the landowner has to remove it. Second thing is leaves. Leaf collection has gone so much better this year, and so I want to thank the Public Works Department for that. And to remind all of my constituents and anybody else that there's 10 days left of leaf collection. So last year, we had a lot of people who put out their leaves on the very last day, and so we actually kind of had to extend it for a while. So please do your leaves this week or this next weekend. So that's my reminder. And the thank you, I want to thank all the people in my ward who helped me collect Christmas presents and clothes for a couple of families that needed them. I put a notice out on the listserv, and I was really overwhelmed with the response that I got from everybody, and I really appreciate that, and I know that the families will appreciate that. So, thank you.
Anything else? Carrie?
Thank you. I just enjoy seeing so many happy faces here tonight. I thank everybody for coming out tonight. And this is our, I believe, last meeting before the holidays. I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas or a Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year, and see you next year. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just to remind council and those present that this weekend, the city will institutionalize its artist studio tour, and this is something that artists have been doing in Tacoma Park for a long time. We have many wonderful artists, and this year, the city is assisting with that, and the Arts and Humanities Commission of Tacoma Park has spearheaded efforts to organize it. It's taking place this Saturday from noon until 6:00 PM, sorry, noon until 5:00 PM. And there will be people exhibiting art here in the community center as well as different artist studios around the city. So make sure, if you're interested, that you get a map and enjoy. I think also, much of the art you will see will be for sale. And if you're like me, I'm very impressed with what Tacoma Park artists can do.
All right. We will now move on to the adoption of minutes. There are three listed on the agenda, but I believe we only received two. So I think I will suggest that we move the minutes of November 6th and November 13th.
Move to adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is public comment period. This is the time set aside on the council's agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. We also have this evening a public hearing on rent stabilization. This is also not the time for comments on rent stabilization. The public hearing on rent stabilization will follow this public comment period. I would ask when you come forward, either for the public comment period, for the rent stabilization hearing, or for any of the regular meeting agenda items, that you identify yourself and that you keep your comments to three minutes. I have a timer which has a little light up on the podium, and it will signal you when you have one minute left, and it will signal you when your three minutes are up. And since we have a fair number of people here this evening, I am going to enforce the three-minute limit to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to participate who wants to participate in the discussion. Yes?
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovelace. I live on 7620 Maple Avenue in Tacoma Park. And I've been, you know, seeing, you know, every so often, you know, kids around the area being angry and stuff like that, and seemingly like they don't have much to go on to. And I'm thinking, when we put in that new gym, I'd like to see some gym programs put in, stuff like, you know, that they can relate to, you know, and stuff that the community needs. Like programs to help the kids steering them away from drugs and steering the kids maybe into, maybe we could have some mental health programs in our new gym, because I think what we've got to do is focus on programs rather than the facility right now. You know, and that would be really some way the city could be getting what their money's worth, you know? And if we can't afford the money for the facility, why can't we refurbish one of the ones up here at the Piney Branch Elementary and refurbish that for the city's use? And that way, we could have some really good programs put in. Another thing I want to do is wish everybody a Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and ask everybody to stay sober for the New Year so that we can all see everybody again and see us all next year. And the next thing is, I don't know how many people know this, but December 14th, which is going to be Thursday, is going to be Jamie Raskin's birthday. I think he's turning the big 4-4. Not absolutely sure, but I think he's turning the big 4-4. And he's one of our, he's our new state senator from the city of Tacoma Park. All right, well, I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy Holiday and see us all again next year. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
Tacoma Park rules.
Good evening, Mayor Porter and councilmembers. I'm CJ Ross, and I was here before. I'm the council representative. Since I've been here last time, however, I retired. So I'm still here working to try to get a contract. We've been doing that since June of this year. And as you know, after the first ratification, I wanted to explain to you, we took it to the members, most of whom are sitting here tonight with our little badges, to ratify the contract, and 96 points, I'm sorry, 88.5% of our membership turned that contract down. It revolved on three issues: wages, performance evaluations, and retirement benefits. On the wage issues, 96.5% of our members voted against the contract because of the wage scale. Unlike most of our surrounding jurisdictions that have performance or merit increases, they also get COLA increases. However, our neighboring cities and counties, Annapolis, Bowie, Montgomery County, College Park, Rockville, Prince George's County, all get a merit increase plus they get a COLA increase. Let me give you several examples. Prince George's County received 2.5% merit increase. They also got a 2.5% COLA increase, 5%. College Park got the same. Bowie received a 2.5% merit increase for fiscal year '05 through '07, and they also received COLA increases, giving them increases of 4.75, 2, I'm sorry, 5.25 and 5.15 for fiscal years '05 through '07. Annapolis employees receive a whopping 5.5% per year for the next four years. This is why we proposed an increase of 3.5% in lieu of the 3.0% offered. We also offered to change the ECI, which is an average of state and local public employees across the nation, to CPI, Consumer Price Index for the Washington Metropolitan Area. 82.7% of our members want CPI. Our members feel that this is a fair way to determine wages. We want to be reasonable, but employees are finding it hard to meet their bills and afford to continue to work here. We're willing to compromise, but we cannot continue down the slide of losing buying power year after year from the surrounding jurisdictions. The second part of our problem is the wage problem, is the surveys. We believe the surveys are flawed for the above reasons, only calculating performance or merit increases, not calculating a COLA increase. You cannot compare performance and merit when other jurisdictions give COLA on top of it. In addition, we would like to agree together on what jurisdictions are surveyed. We have heard time and time again from our members that they want to be compared to jurisdictions around us in the Washington Metropolitan Area with union representation. We have offered proposals to establish what cities will be a part of the survey and have been rejected.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Could I just ask a quick question? You have a lot of information about the, about the membership's vote.
Certainly.
When you gave us information about the various jurisdictions and said that they were getting merit plus COLA?
Yes, ma'am.
What was their merit based on?
What is their merit based on? Performance.
And so, do they have a similar system to ours with outstanding and satisfactory and unsatisfactory?
We'll get into that. No, some of them don't. Some just have a merit increase if you meet merit. In other words, there is no, it's either you don't meet the merit or you meet the merit. That's what it is. There isn't a distinguished, as there is here.
Okay. And is there a proposal to translate that into the system that we have, which I understand might not be a favorite, but it's the one that we have? Is there?
Well, you have a pay for performance. And there, we have had several proposals on the table to change that pay for performance to expand it to more people. Right now, and Dave will talk about this a little bit further, only about a third of our membership of the workers, you know, the workers, get that distinguished, whereas about 70, over 70% of managers get it. So there seems to be a breakdown in even the distinguished portion of that. So when you're talking about extra pay of the 2.5%, only about a third of our, the employees are getting it.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just to follow up on that last point, if you're surveying the local jurisdictions, you'll discover that the majority of workers in these jurisdictions receive the merit increases. Whereas in Tacoma Park, if you're comparing them, almost, I would say, all of the local jurisdictions receive a cost of living increase no matter what. Whereas in Tacoma Park, if you do not meet certain measurements or standards, for whatever reason, perhaps, you know, you're going through a divorce that year, or for whatever reason, you're unable to meet those performance standards, you get nothing, no cost of living increase whatsoever. Now, the cost of your groceries is going up, but you're unable to continue to buy the same amount of groceries because, for whatever reason, perhaps your supervisor didn't do an appropriate job of rating you, you fell short in your measurements. And yet supervisors are getting rated at 75% distinguished. I'm going to continue where CJ left off. We want to assure that there's a survey done in fiscal year '08 and every year, three years thereafter. Right now, we put forth language to assure that the survey would be done, but any time for that has been rejected. Finally, we also want to be a part of the survey. I understand data can be manipulated, but membership felt like if the union is part of the process, members will feel better about the results. In the past, we were brought in after the survey was done and just asked to rubber stamp it, as opposed to being brought in earlier to say, okay, well, what's part of the survey? Who's being surveyed? We're falling further and further behind each year because our merit increase is not large enough, or because we don't have a cost of living increase just built in the way, the way every other jurisdiction in the area has. And you might say that we haven't considered the fact that someone could receive a distinguished performance evaluation and therefore receive an additional 2.5%. But as CJ said, unlike other jurisdictions that pay merit increases to virtually all employees on top of the COLA to everyone, our plan has consistently paid just a little over one-third of our bargaining unit, and correspondingly, it has compensated managers at 70%. You have to ask that question, how can over 70% of the managers be considered distinguished if less than a third of the employees are distinguished? I mean, how do they receive a distinguished rating when they're essentially, you know, being measured by the work that their underlings are doing? It would appear that there are two different standards here, and the people who can least afford it, your garbage men, the people keeping your leaves clean, the guys keeping your streets plowed, were making like $12 an hour in many cases. They're the people who are getting the short end of the stick. And that's our second problem with 89% of the voting against the contract because of the current performance evaluation procedures. There's one part of the performance evaluation problems that we're having a major problem with. In the police department, civilian employees?
I'm sorry, your time is up. I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Can you submit those to us in writing, though? Thank you.
My name is Stephen Poore. I'm the political coordinator for the council, and I've just been asked to finish up here. Our third issue is that the benefit with, retirement benefits are inadequate in Tacoma Park, and it's another reason that 62% of our members voted against the contract because of there not being an increase in the 457 plan. We believe that the reason that so many of your employees and our members don't belong to the 457 plan is that the match and the contribution level is so low and has not been increased in a great number of years. The city and its employees need to move forward, and we need your help in moving forward. Last Friday, there was a meeting to vote on the contract proposals again, was overwhelmingly rejected by 83% of the people in the unit. Today, we filed for mediation with the Federal Mediation Conciliation Service in order to help resolve our differences. We know that the employees, what the employees need in order to vote on the contract, and we need to move toward that end. We'd like your assistance in moving forward, and we're available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your help now and in the future.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to that topic? Well, I thank you all for coming forward. I think it's not appropriate for the council basically to negotiate with you in this setting. And so I don't want to address the specifics of your concerns. I don't think that would be appropriate. But I do want to say a couple of things, and I believe that I speak on behalf of the entire council. The first is that we very much appreciate the work that the city of Tacoma Park employees do. I know that many of you work very long hours and you work under conditions that probably many people in the private sector don't, and the council does appreciate the work that you do. The other thing that I wanted to say is that some years ago, the council made a decision, and it was the council's decision, and I believe the council will stick by it, to change the way city employees' compensation was calculated. Prior to that, city employee compensation had been calculated on the basis of seniority and on the basis of cost of living. The council made a decision at that point to change the way city employee compensation was made, to gear it instead to the market, so that instead of cost of living increases each year, you get increases each year based on what the market pays for the type of position that you have. Some years, the market adjustments have been higher than cost of living would be. Some years, they're going to be lower than cost of living would be, although we have set a lower limit for how, for where they would be set at this point, 3%, that they won't go below even if the market adjustment is lower than that. So we have tried to protect employees' buying power. But the council did make a very conscious decision to compensate employees on the basis of performance rather than seniority and cost of living. And I will say that, speaking for myself, and I believe for the other members of the council, we felt that that was an advisable thing to do. As I said, the city employees that I have come in contact with are excellent workers, and if there are glitches in the performance evaluation system, we very much want to see those fixed. But I believe that the council stands behind the basic pay-for-performance structure rather than a seniority structure.
Can I ask a question? Something, Dave, that you mentioned was about the ECI versus CPI, or I may not be remembering right. Is that, is that a permanent request that it be switched to the other one? And I realize this is just negotiating for a three-year period, so it would be permanent until the next negotiation, but what I've been confused by is that it looks like it's seeking the higher percentage, not necessarily the specific index.
The concern was that employees were interested in being able to buy the same gasoline last year as they could buy, you know, this year, or vice versa. And it seemed to us that a more intelligent measure of that would be something that was based specifically on a measurement from the Baltimore, Washington area of consumer prices, as opposed to a national figure that's based on, you know, the city of Oklahoma City, you know, or somewhere that doesn't have the same gas prices and heating oil prices and electricity increases. So yes, it would be sort of a running change. We understood that the concern was that it'd sort of be based on a market, you know, what other people in other jurisdictions were being paid. But since other people in other jurisdictions were receiving a cost of living increase, it seemed to us it would be equivalent.
And the ECI that employees currently receive is not given to all employees?
It is not. If you fail to meet certain performance standards, you get, you would, in the proposal, you would get nothing.
So it's not COLA for everyone, and then merit plus COLA for the distinguished?
No.
The way it currently works, I understand, is that if you receive a satisfactory rating, you get the market increase, and it's only if you get an unsatisfactory rating that you don't.
Right, and that's the problem.
Yes. So your concern is that unsatisfactory employees are not getting increases?
The concern is that there is no baseline across the board measure that will keep this person who, for whatever reason, may or may not make their, their measure, keep them able to drive to work and pay the same gas prices, and still able to heat their houses at the same prices.
So what you're saying is that our current, you're not objecting to the pay-for-performance scale. You're objecting to the fact that unsatisfactory workers get no merit increase and no cost of living increase?
That's part of it. I think it's, it's basically that across the board, we wanted to ensure that we were being paid fairly according to the market that's out there, and the market that's out there has both cost of living increase and merit, and almost everybody gets that. And here, you know, there's this, this double standard where managers are receiving 70% distinguished and employees are receiving, you know, 30% distinguished. And there seems to be nothing that keeps us... there seems to be nothing that keeps us level with the market that's out there.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification, and just for the mayor's benefit, I would think it would be inappropriate for me to be asking any of these questions in private, given that this is something that's been brought to us. You all are here to represent your membership's position, and I'm asking clarifying questions only. All right.
Just to clarify one point, because it's based on performance evaluations, it is incumbent on management to actually do them. And in fact, in the police department, those evaluations have not been done for two years in some cases. So people have had no chance to catch up to their distinguished status or whatever.
And I believe the council is behind you in wanting the performance evaluation system to work correctly. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Antonio Marvell, and I live in 1115 Kingwood Drive, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And my comment is about the gym. I don't think we need to spend seven or ten million dollars on a gym. You can spend maybe two million dollars on the old gym with their remodel that, and the money that is left, maybe invest it on, give them a pay raise like they're asking for, and maybe hire more police officers for safety, and maybe cleaning up, cleaning up the back of Audi and the Red Apple area. I mean, it's filthy with drunk people back there, you know? And when you see a cancer, you gotta get ahead of it, because if you don't get ahead of it, it's gonna kill everybody.
Which, which old gym are you referring to?
The one in New Hampshire Avenue.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You know? And another thing, I sit at the bus stop every morning on Jackson and Wirewood, and the people driving through there, they don't stop at the stop signs, and they keep right there at the bus stop. They don't stop at the bus, at the stop signs. I mean, I know we have a few police officers, but maybe once a week or once a month, you can send somebody there to monitor them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to make comments at the public comment period? All right, we're closing the public comment period. I see that council members, County Councilmember Tom Perez is here. I did see him walk in. Is he, is he here? Good. I want to take an item, since he's already here, I want to take an item out of order and suggest that before we move to the public hearing, the council take up the resolution honoring council member, commending the service of Tom Perez, the Tacoma Park community. As everyone knows, Tom Perez, who has been serving on the county council for four years, representing District Five, is leaving the county council, although he's not leaving our community. And he is here with his three children, and I'd like to, if I could, just read the resolution very quickly. It says, whereas Tom Perez has served the people of Tacoma Park as a county council member for four years, and whereas while a member of the Montgomery County Council, he was highly regarded by his colleagues and was elected as council vice president in 2004 and president in 2005, and whereas along with council members Leventhal and Silverman, he worked to preserve the interests of Tacoma Park and Silver Spring in Montgomery County funding and policy decisions, a level of advocacy that was new for the down-county area, and whereas while a member of the Montgomery County Council, Mr. Perez vigorously promoted the Purple Line, and whereas Mr. Perez developed innovative ways to bring down the cost of health care and provide prescription medicines for all people in Montgomery County, and whereas he worked with both the community and Washington Adventist Hospital to resolve concerns about a proposed medical office building on the hospital campus, helping to secure commitments that enabled the hospital to plan for the medical office building to be built in the Long Branch redevelopment area, and whereas the highest ranking, as the highest ranking Latino elected official in the state of Maryland, Mr. Perez put a face on the strength of Tacoma Park's multicultural community. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland commends Tom Perez for his strong service to the city and the community of Tacoma Park and wishes him the best in his future endeavors. And I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional council comments? I'd like to just kick this off by saying personally to you, Tom, that I, when I first met you, when you were thinking about running for the county council, I immediately recognized you as a person of great intelligence and community spiritedness who would make a great county council member. And I have to say, the hopes that I had for your tenure on the county council were fulfilled in the, in the outstanding work that you did, not just for Tacoma Park and for District Five, but the innovative practices that you pushed to put in place in a number of areas for the entire county. And I'm very sorry that you're leaving the county council, but, you know, things happen the way they happen, and I, I will say personally that I very much hope to see you back on the, on the elected scene at some point in the not-too-distant future, and I look forward to that. And I thank you for the help that you've given me personally and to the help that you've given Tacoma Park on many, many occasions. And best wishes.
Well, thank you.
I first met Tom because he's a parent of a young man who goes to school with my, my daughter, and I just knew him as Tom. I saw him, I saw him on the soccer field, and I'm like, hi, Tom, how are you? The kids advance, hi, Tom, how are you? And then I was sitting here the night that they were actually doing the nominations when I, when I ran for the council, and, and somebody says, oh, Tom Perez is going up to the podium, and I'm watching, and Tom walks by, and I'm like, hey, look, there's Rapha's dad! And he goes by and he stands up, and that was the moment that it dawned on me that he was also Tom Perez, because I didn't know his last name. And I think one of the things that's really interesting for me, watching you over the last year, that I've really been paying attention to how you negotiate, working at the county and, and also bringing your family along with everything. And I've appreciated that, and I've appreciated all the work that you've done for the city and, and all of the people in the ward. I now really appreciate you as well, so I want to thank you for that.
Thanks very much.
Hi, Tom. Thanks so much for being here. I, I think it's, it's very important that we all recognize your accomplishments and also your bright future. I'm thrilled with what you were able to get done as a county council member, and I'm also very hopeful that you will do all that you can for the people of Maryland with your great skills. I know that it might not be this time, but the next time around, I'm, I'm very hopeful that, that it will work out for you. One thing I wanted to thank you for especially is, like Colleen, the first time I saw you, you were going to an event with your children, and it made a big impression on me. At that time, I don't think I had kids yet, but you showed up at the, at the, oh, why am I blanking on the name of it? It's the Montgomery County Central Committee meeting, and you were there to introduce yourself and just give a shout out for the county and your interest in it. And you had, I think, two kids then. So-
One in the middle of the campaign.
That's right. And then when, it made my interest in politics and my decision to run for office not seem quite so crazy because you were, were also doing the same. And I hope that you enjoy your time with family and, and that you also continue in your public service, because we need you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I can just add that I think you not only met expectations, but surpassed them in many ways, and been impressed with any number of the efforts that you've undertaken. And I hope that in your continuing to be around in Tacoma Park, that there might be occasions where we can call on your expertise and knowledge to help with particular efforts. One that immediately comes to mind is making sure that the ladder truck stays in Tacoma Park for-
I just talked to Tom Carr last week about that.
Good, good, because I know on that one, you need all the help we can get, and I know that-
They're doing subliminal advertising right now. People said Merry Christmas. You gotta say Happy Holidays, too. Don't forget Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa. Thank you, Bruce.
And that you'll continue to be available to help the residents of Tacoma Park and all the residents of the state in all the many ways that you're so very helpful to everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And Councilmember Perez, I think Councilmember Williams' word was the proper one, and that is, impressed, I was very impressed with the amount that you were able to accomplish while on the county council. I know the, the residents of Tacoma Park were very appreciative of what, what you did, and I, I think I can say also that they are very, very disappointed with the way things turned out this year and look forward to your re-entering the political arena. Well, thank you for all those kind words. I am very, very grateful. I want to thank Colleen and Karen for their wonderful leadership with my daughter Susanna and the Girl Scouts. It has been a great experience, and I'm embarrassing my daughter right now by saying that, but she was very grateful, and they went on a great camping trip already together, and I'm very, very grateful. And I'm grateful to all of you, Joy and Kathy and Bruce and Terry. We've all had some good times together, and there are plenty more. A lot of work to do. You look behind me tonight, and I see the audience, and I see the public hearing, and these are important issues. Local government addresses such critical issues that are bread and butter for our residents, and if there's one thing I learned early on, it was the importance of local government. That local governments across this state and across this nation are incubators of innovation, and Tacoma Park has been a leader on so many levels in so many areas. And Montgomery County has been a leader in so many areas and so many levels over so many years, and it was fun, and it will continue to be fun. And tonight's hearing is yet another indicator of the important work that you do. But I'm reminded with great frequency that the most important title that I have and ever will have is the title of dad, and I'm further reminded that the mind can only absorb as much as the seat of the pants can endure, and their seats of the pants endure very little. So with that, I will say thank you, and I will always be there, Bruce, to remind Tom Carr that we have a promise on a ladder truck, and I will always be there on all the other issues that affect our community, because this is my community, and we have a wonderfully active community, and that's what makes us great. So thank you for your kind words, and thank you to the community for all of their support. This is a great, great place to live.
Well, thank you. And if you can stay one more second here.
Sure.
I'll put the resolution in front of the council. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, and I want to do a formal presentation.
Oh, well, thank you.
If you could, if you could come up here.
Oh, sure. Oh, I'd love that.
I want to come with you, Daddy.
We didn't think five of those points. Jesse's the master.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we present you the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, all of you. Take care.
Next time.
Okay. Good night.
Raphael also wanted to note Happy Hanukkah.
Happy Holidays.
I, just, just a note that Tom Perez discovered a real good way to campaign. His son Raphael, the youngest one, was born in the middle of his campaign, and he carried him door-to-door in a little, a little baby carrier, and I don't doubt that that accounted for some of the votes in his win, to have a very cute little baby when you go door-to-door. The next item on the agenda is we're going to move to the public hearing. The public hearing tonight is on suggested revisions to rent stabilization. As you know, we hired an expert in rent stabilization, Dr. Kenneth Barr, who provided the council with copies of a report. If you don't have a copy, I think there's still some over in the, there's some copies over on the side there. You can take a look at his report. And the topic of the public hearing is rent stabilization. While any of your comments would be appreciated, it would be particularly helpful if you wanted to address some of the recommendations made by Dr. Barr. The council will be using that as the basis for its future discussions of rent stabilization, and so if you wish to address those recommendations, that would be very helpful. What I would ask, that we continue to do what we did before, ask people to identify themselves. Is there a sign-up sheet over there, Suzanne? Okay. We'll start with the list of people who signed up on the sign-up sheet, and then when we've gone through everyone who signed up, you can still sign up if you wish, and when we've gone through everyone who signed up, then we will take other people from the audience. And I would ask when you come up that you, again, identify yourself just for the record, even though we've got you written down here, and also that you keep your comments to three minutes, and again, I'll continue to use the timer. And we do that so that the maximum number of people will have an opportunity to make their comments before the council. So I will start with the first person who is signed up, who's Eileen Glenn, and she will be followed by Michael, I believe it's Weiner.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Eileen Glue, and I reside in an apartment at 7513 Maple Avenue. I would like you to consider two steps prior to voting on amending the rent stabilization law. I have listened to the tapes of your council deliberations over the past several months, and I have reviewed the city's affordable housing plan and report of October 16, 2006. First, while the affordable housing plan has many commendable goals, nowhere does it state what the city or the council believes is the appropriate income mix for units in Tacoma Park. What precisely is an affordable unit? How many units does the city wish to be occupied by very low-income, low-income, moderate-income, or wealthy individuals? What income corresponds to those categories? The Washington Metropolitan Statistical Area median income for 2005 was $89,300. How much housing is going to be made available to the fully one-quarter of the population which earns less than $44,700? How about the fifteen percent who earn less than $26,790? Do you know that the average social security income is less than $12,000 a year? Just 5,000 families in Montgomery County get housing vouchers. Will there be a home in Tacoma Park for those who do not? Unless you formulate clear occupancy objectives for the Tacoma Park affordable housing policy, you can't gauge the desired effect of changes to the rent stabilization law. Second, Dr. Barr suggests nine changes to the rent stabilization law that will raise rents. I request an impact analysis of each successive change before you vote. By how much will rents increase pursuant to each proposal? If you don't do an impact analysis, you cannot know if increased rents will be affordable to your target segments. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Weiner to be followed by Angie and Ajith Abraham.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Michael Weiner. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the Park Ritchie Apartments. Initially, we believe that the Rent Stabilization Act should be repealed in its entirety. We feel that the plan is shortsighted and does nothing to ensure affordable housing in Tacoma Park in the future. The Rent Stabilization Act has the effect of lowering the assessed value of multifamily properties, thereby depriving the city, state, and county of millions of dollars in tax revenue. The effect of the Rent Stabilization Act imposes an increased tax burden on the owners of single-family homes. Having said that, we have read Dr. Barr's report, and we applaud him for his efforts. Some of his recommendations are quite ambitious, some are quite plausible. Dr. Barr proposes that owners of rental housing should be able to make a fair rate of return on their investment. We applaud the concept, however, it ignores the fact that due to the restrictions on rent increases over the past 25 years, this will not bring rents up to market and will not allow owners to make a fair rate of return. Dr. Barr's proposals for a limited form of vacancy decontrol do not go far enough. Our reading of Dr. Barr's report basically tells us that he believes that the Rent Stabilization Act in its current form is unconstitutional. In order to- However, it ignores the fact that due to the restrictions on rent increases over the past 25 years, this will not bring rents up to market and will not allow owners to make a fair rate of return. Dr. Barr's proposals for a limited form of vacancy de-control do not go far enough. Our reading of Dr. Barr's report basically tells us that he believes that the Rent Stabilization Act in its current form is unconstitutional. In order to remedy these past inequities, but not to place too great a burden on our current tenants, a broader concept of vacancy de-control is necessary. We suggest, at the very least, there should be complete vacancy de-control the first time a unit becomes vacant, if and after Dr. Barr's other suggestions are adopted. Then, the other elements of Dr. Barr's proposals in various forms could be applied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angie and Ajith Abraham, followed by Paul Gentile.
Good evening. My name is Angie Abraham. I reside on Kennebec Avenue, and I have read the proposal and listened to your prior discussion upon it. I've been on both sides of the rent stabilization coin. When I moved here in 2002, I rented an apartment on Kennebec Avenue at 1,100 a month. I found out later that the allowable rent was $680. Nothing prepared me for that. I had no idea there was rent stabilization at the time. I now own the next-door apartment building, and I'm a landlord. I cannot afford to operate that apartment building at the allowable rent. So neither is there any teeth in rent stabilization, because there is no real recourse. When I finally found out three years later that I was double-charged for rent, there were no owners to go back to. So I understand... Excuse me. I understand what's behind rent stabilization, and I understand that you want to have affordable housing, and you want to have a mix of diversity, and you want to resist entrecipation. On the other hand, how do you know that the rent reports that you get are honest? How do you know that that's what the tenants are really paying? On the other hand, I am a landlord now, but you don't get any affordable housing units out of me. I have three units in my building. It's the only property I own. I live in two of them. I cannot get a fair rate of return, charging $680 a month for a two-bedroom apartment. It's impossible. I can't get a fair rate of return if I turn in capital improvement, upon capital improvement, hardship, any of those things. I can't... There is no way. The only way that you can help landlords like me, who have very small buildings, is to go to number... Well, the numbers changed on this list. To exemptions. To allow landlords of small facilities to be exempt, so that we can have reasonable rent. I'm not going to gentrify Tacoma Park by putting in improvements in my building and charging $2,000 or $2,500. I just want to charge $1,000. I mean, I just want a reasonable rate of return. And I hope that you will consider not just changing, according to Dr. Barr's proposal, not just changing the criteria for exemptions based on the number of units in a building versus the number of units owned, but giving exemptions like the City of Washington, D.C. does for buildings less than four. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Gentile to be followed by Nicholas Azinji, I believe. I'm sorry if I...
I'm sorry. She's my wife, and we wrote her name together.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I didn't plan to speak at length, but I do want to say something that I think she missed. The knowing-doing gap here is very large. I'm sure you all know how much it costs to maintain a property. I do not believe in affordable housing but, you know, a slum or something that is so ridiculous. I would like to, for example, when people change, I'd like to paint the house. I just spend $1,000. Yeah, the county has... The city has process to do that. But as the study shows, it is actually very difficult to get my returns from it. $1,000 for painting, I cannot charge $100 to the client. So the issue here is, I do not understand what you mean by affordable housing. Should we leave it as it is and let people live? Or should we kind of give some level of quality? Bugs, should I treat for bugs or leave it as it is? So I would like, when the city looks at these proposals, I'm hoping that you will place some process in place where we can look and say, yeah, that is fair. That means the giver and taker gets something out of the process. I somehow feel I'm held hostage here. Hey, you're stuck here. In fact, talking to your officials, why did you buy the property? I doubt that some of you really believe in this process. When I get that kind of an answer from the city worker, whoever it is. So this is my concern. I'm truly hoping that you will consider that, you know, we want to make Tacoma Park a livable place. Tacoma Park should be a place where I should be proud to live, not because it is a poor dump, because it is a good place where people take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Gentile to be followed by Nicholas Azinji.
Good evening, Mayor Porter, and members of the council. My name is Paul Gentile, and I have managed two properties in Tacoma Park for the better part of 25 years, and read with interest Dr. Barr's review of the issues and the options. My first initial reaction is that this is a good start, and finally, a recognition that numerous problems exist with the covering of operating costs and allowing for reasonable costs to be put forward. However, it seems to me that the mayor and council adoption of any policies, promulgation of its own policies, and final codification of an ordinance is a long way off. As the report puts out, it does not reflect the views of the city. We do not know what the policies of the councils will pursue. And the proposal basically marks time and does not fulfill the promises, as Mayor Porter, that we spoke about, that this would be done by the end of this year. Where does this report leave us, and what is the plan to go forward, and with what recommendations? That's still all up in the air, and if you use this as the basis for decision-making, I have a few comments about that. I have four basic comments. Number one, the general comment about the report that there are no scenarios regarding how this would affect property owners or tenants. I think that's a basic and fundamental part of the report that should have been in there. If we were to adopt this as whole cloth, you have to see the impact, and the impact stretched over time. Number two, the recommendation seems to make more things more complicated than they're supposed to make things simpler. The last six months, we want to say we want to make things simpler. These recommendations make things more complicated. And similarly, the staff here would have to go through all kinds of gyrations to figure out what the appropriate rent increase would be for a particular unit. Number three, there is no discussion regarding the impact of the current ordinances or how recommendations would impact and require changing of existing statutes. I don't think there has been a legal review of that. If you make recommendations, if you make recommendations, they're going to have an impact upon the existing statutes. Number four, there is no analysis in this report about the interrelationship of each proposal upon one another. I think that's... If I'm doing a report, and I've been an analyst for over 30 years, that's what I would look at in order to do that. You know, I support most of the recommendations that have been put forward here. However, again, it's... We're going to go through another six months of this and finally find out what the council really wants. And that, in the meantime, you know, as was articulated before, the landlords are absorbing the cost increases, particularly those of utilities. And, you know, some of the recommendations in here are so vague, you can drive a truck through them. And therefore, we need to have more specificity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gentile. I would note that there has been some discussion about the timeline for considering these. I had hoped the council would be able to make a decision by the end of the year, but we were not able to do that. Currently, the timeframe is that we are asking Dr. Barr to come back in January. We will plan to devote all or most of a council meeting to discussions with him. And it is my hope to have the final legislative language ready by February for the council to consider in late February or March. Now, I can schedule things on the agenda, but I can't, nor do I attempt to, constrain council discussion of the issues. So that's the schedule that I would plan, and we'll see how things come up. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nicholas Azinji. I own four units at 7900 Kennebec Avenue. Just last week, I was talking to some officials who are in this building concerning this housing. I heard a couple of other people have just said, and I kind of agree with them. Unfortunately, I'm speaking almost after they have all spoken. But I also feel like a hostage, because I just spoke about this last week. And in fact, I'm about to put my house back in the market. It's like we're stock. You can't... You need... This guy has two air conditions. You need a circuit breaker. You go get the cost of it, the cost is so expensive. Meanwhile, you say this guy has to pay this amount of rent, and he can't pay more. You determine affordable housing. The tenants themselves are not complaining. I mean, if I say I need to get something for $800, and the tenant says, can I make it $750? The tenants are not complaining. So who's determining what is affordable and what is not? And then I get this feeling that when I come to talk to people at Tacoma City, I mean, they're just for the tenants. They say they're tenant landlord specialists, but they only defend the tenants. My tenants are happy with their apartments, have spent over $20,000 on my apartment, and yet I cannot get anything. And they said 2.8% for the last 25 years. It's the only city in the place. I feel like I'm in a socialist country. You know, it's just amazing that you're in America, and you can't get a demand and a supply kind of thing. If the demand is there, let the demand be there. If people can't afford it, the landlords will bring down the rent. I mean, forcing people to pay a certain amount of money makes it look like we're in a communist republic. This is the only city with Washington, D.C., who does this? I've never heard about this before. So I really feel like opting out and not even being a landlord. I've lost a lot of money, but maybe in the future, for those future landlords coming, it will be good for them. Somebody buys a house at $250,000 four years ago. He sells it for $550,000. You tell that person to get 2.1% of a rent increase, which is not even up to one-fifth of how much he has bought the houses. Houses just tripled or doubled in some areas over the last five years. How can you put a 2.1% on the same kind of housing? I think every house should be considered on a different basis. I agree with some of these reports, because something here on number nine says required disclosure of rent stabilization information from the real estate transactions. I wasn't even aware there was a rent stabilization. I probably would not have purchased in D.C., but that's my fault, fine. And then the other one says reconsideration of application of available but unused rent increase allowances. I spoke to an official here. She said the allowable rent from 2000, when the house was purchased, I cannot get it anymore. That guy bought the house, $600 was fine by him. How come I lose 2001, I lose 2.8%, I lose it in 2002, '03, '04, and '05? And she says I can only get it from '05 to '06. So sometimes interpretation of the law, too, could be a problem for those who work here. So please, I think everybody else here has spoken, and the staff here has to be a little bit more sensitive to the landlords. Inasmuch as it's good to protect the tenants, we have all been tenants before, and now we're landlords. But nobody seems to be concerned about the landlords. There should be another unit for landlords only. Everybody here protects the tenants. They don't care about the landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Lincoln to be followed by Ashwin... I'm sorry. Ronald Lincoln to be followed by Ashwin... I can't quite read it. I think it begins with a C, and I apologize. We'll see if that person can recognize their name when we get to it. Mr. Lincoln?
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for giving me a chance to speak a few minutes tonight. Our family has been landlords in Tacoma Park since 1948 or '49, and we have managed our own properties. We've never had a management company do that. We take our work seriously, and we have what is known, I guess, as staying power. A very unfortunate set of circumstances has occurred in the last few years. It didn't start necessarily with rent control, but it's been made worse by it. To give you an idea of the gravity of the situation for landlords, and I understand the sentiment of tenants here, and we respect that. We have an apartment building a block from this building that was built in 1949. It's maintained well. We put a quarter of a million dollars into new windows, new roofs, and so forth, just about three years ago. A one-bedroom apartment rents for $663. That's the average rent for a one-bedroom. A two-bedroom for $765. That is probably about 30 to 40% below what market rents would be normally for that size apartment. In the last three years, the cost of our insurance with State Farm has gone up 30 to 50%. The cost of heating gas has gone up 50%. Pepco has announced a 38.5% increase this past fall. All of our services, including plumbing, electrical, roofing, landscaping, have gone up dramatically, certainly by the same percentages. Yet, the City of Tacoma Park allows us basically a 2.8% annual increase. It doesn't work. We've gotten to a, what I call, an economic crossroads, where I think that the county, the city council now is going to become a savior for future generations of tenants. We are in a situation where unless we can pass along some of these expenses in a meaningful way and maintain the properties as they should be, we're going to look for an exit strategy. And I think that all members of the council understand what that means. Condo conversion seems to be the wave of the future. Our family has no interest whatsoever in selling our properties. But unless we can recoup some of the expenses, or most of the expenses, make a reasonable return on the value of the property, we have no choice. I'm here as a managing partner of several apartment buildings, but I'm also here speaking on behalf of future generations of tenants who are not going to have affordable housing in the City of Tacoma Park unless we take seriously Dr. Barr's recommendations, the ones in particular that will permit a pass-through of some of the important tremendous expenses that we've incurred. I thank you so much.
Thank you. I believe, and I apologize for... I can't quite read this handwriting. It looks like Ashwin, and it begins with a C, on Grand Avenue? Is that... Asher?
12 Grant Avenue?
Is there somebody from 12 Grant who's here? All right. Okay. We'll go on to the next one. I believe it's Joy Turrioli. And I apologize again for also on 12 Grant. Are you passing also, whoever that person is? Okay. Irene, and I apologize, I can read the letters, but I'm not sure I can pronounce it. Irene Jakubski? Nikolov Jakubski? Jakubusk? As I say, I apologize for mispronunciations. Vicentia Cabareo Rozapada? And I... If there's anyone whose name is close to this, I apologize for any mispronunciations. Gina Short? Gina Short?
Hi. I guess I'm a newbie at this. But, thank you. I'm here on behalf of tenants. And one of the things that we've noticed, that I've noticed in here, is that, yes, there is sort of an issue regarding the rent and whatnot, but there also is the account, the issue of accountability. And I'm on 7667 Maple Avenue. And one of the issues on that is that the apartment complex, Parkview Towers, has submitted a hardship waivers petition. And the paperwork, I was able to review it. It spent three days reviewing all of that paperwork. The issue with that is I have seen that there was $882,000 that was not accounted for between the vendor ledger and the invoices. So when the landlords also say that there is an issue regarding the amount of money that they're losing within the property, as a tenant, I'm also looking at the accountability issue between the landlord and the tenant. And I have a three-page letter of the discrepancies that were noted within the hardship waiver petition. You know, $56,000 that was given to employees with no invoices to account for it. Also, the other thing is, is that the landlord, in some instances, as an example is with waste, they have been laying on their payments, and they have been levied thousands of dollars as a result of it. So when you look at the issue of... So when you look at the issue of the rent stabilization, you also have to look at the accountability of the landlord in the future. And, um, one of the things that we looked at was in the hardship waiver petition, that they were using the nineteen ninety time period based, and basing it upon the two thousand six time period. Those time periods are so astronomically different from each other that you really cannot make a comparison at all. And in addition, the landlord did not present any documentation of expenses of that nineteen ninety time period. So it's practically impossible for us to do a comparison between the nineteen ninety time period and the two thousand six time period. In addition, they have not provided the, uh, the necessary documentation for us to look at the expenses and to note the expenses on the, the past due notices that they have been charged in other instances on past due, like with, um, Washington sanitation, they've been charged five hundred dollars for one month and four hundred dollars for one month. And we, as tenants, are paying for that past due charge. So that has to be, the accountability is so impungent upon this, um, issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Ellen, Ellen Ensle to be followed by Ken Firestone.
Um, I'm Ellen Ensle. Um, I own, my husband and I have a three-family, um, building. We were tenants originally, then we had the opportunity to purchase it. So we, as this couple back here, we live on one floor and we have tenants on the other two floors. Um, I've looked at the, uh, information, uh, that Mr. Barr has put together. I think there are some good points here, but I do, I do think that, um, some of it needs to be clarified. Um, there should be more, I think, more information about what's meant by limited increases upon vacancies or, um, an annual registration fee. I thought we already paid that when we, um, um, when we, the, the rental license, um, and we already have a, have a fee per unit. Um, exemption based on number of units on property. Um, I think that it is true that, that those folks who own larger buildings have an economy of scale, that those of us who have smaller buildings don't. Um, and I think that's an, that's an issue. Um, when we purchased our building five years ago, prices were somewhat normal, you know? If someone purchased the building next door to us, um, uh, last Jan, uh, last January, prices were really pretty high and it's not clear to me that the rents that they were charging, they're going to be able to sustain a mortgage on that property. So, um, I think that there are questions, um, and I'll try to maybe send an email with more specific questions, so I won't take up time here. Um, questions about, uh, what's involved for, um, for landlords, but also, I think those questions about what kind of income mix we want and what are the impacts of these changes based on what we have right now, the impacts on tenants. I mean, we were tenants for four or five years and, um, and it's, it's difficult to be a tenant in, um, in, in this area. Uh, this is like one place where you can not have to pay, you know, twelve, thirteen hundred dollars for, you know, a studio. Um, and I think those are issues we, that, that I'd like to, like to see, um, addressed. So when you do have those, um, hearings and have that conversation with Mr. Barr, um, there may be more specific information that we, uh, that would need to be, um, addressed here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Ken? Ken Firestone to be followed by Jane Holmes.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Ken Firestone. I live at two two six Park Avenue, and I'm an interested bystander in this being neither a tenant nor a landlord. But I have some serious questions whether the idea of rent stabilization is the right way to go about providing affordable housing in the city. Um, perhaps we need to look at other ways of doing this. I know there are other things, perhaps, uh, more in the nature of some sort of voucher or, um, subsidy, which would, could be, um, on a sliding scale according to income, so it would be a means determined. Um, perhaps we have to pay for this with some more creative taxes on things, I don't know. But I don't, really don't think that rent stabilization is necessarily the fairest way to provide affordable housing in the city. I suspect it's unfair to the landlords in many ways who subsidize affordable housing, and I think it also may be unfair in that it's providing cheap housing for people who are in the controlled units who could afford to pay a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jane Holmes to be followed by Pat Lovelace.
Good evening, I'm Jane Holmes and, uh, landlord in Tacoma Park. Uh, the process of looking at rent control has been ongoing for ye, for a few years. At first, there was resistance from the city in having a discussion at all. Uh, now changes will be made without the discussion groups of which we thought landlords would be a part, other than the three public, uh, comment, uh, hearings that we've had. It appears staff and certain city council members already decided what changes we need to make. During the last cat council discussion, a motion was made to vote right then without public comment. Dr. Barr was instructed to start drafting legislation. Uh, it sounds like it's a done deal. The council knows what it wants to change on rent control, no input from existing landlords will have any effect on legislation, and landlords will continue to be the financing vehicles for the city's affordable housing policy. Money's been spent to have Dr. Barr write a report, most of which were, uh, appeared in proposals that, uh, was done, done by sets, city staff reports. Millions of dollars have been spent on the community center, um, for both city offices and public spaces. Millions more may be spent on a gym and other offices. Only ten thousand dollars a year is spent on affordable housing by the city. Landlords contribute to excess of a million dollars a year through rent control subsidizing people who don't, uh, need to qualify. In our building, no tenant would qualify for a subsidy as, um, as some make as much as a hundred thousand dollars a year. Why are they being subsidized? You want us to comment on suggested changes, but until you clarify, it's extremely hard to comment. If the hardship petition is to be changed to a fair rate of return petition, what will the parameters of the fair rate of return petition? Uh, if you eliminate capital improvements, how do improvement cost filter into the fair rate of return? If you rely on code improvement enforcement to ensure improvements are made with rental property, the condition of the rental property in general will deteriorate. If some units will be exempt, which ones? One, two, four, ten? Clarification is needed. If tenants are to pay six dollar monthly registration fee with the landlord paying the bill in advance, what happens if the unit is empty or if they don't pay it? Do we, does the landlord get a refund? I, just, what are the details of vacancy decontrol? You may say we should trust the city council to be fair to the landlords, but with the history we have, it's hard for, uh, that to be possible. The devil is in the details, few of which have been disclosed. When these details be forthcoming? Will it be before you, uh, the night you vote on these changes? Will we know in advance? Tacoma Park homeowners should be concerned about these suggested changes. They are already paying higher taxes to support rent control. When the new rent control legislation is challenged in court...
Can you wind up?
Yeah, I'm just, just about finished. All Tacoma Park taxpayers will have to pay the legal fees of the city attorneys when, when this is challenged in court. Um, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, ju, just to clarify there, um, the, the council intends to have Dr. Barr return in January. At that point, we will discuss, uh, the proposals and I hope we will be able to, um, clarify some of the details. Um, we will, uh, let everyone know when that discussion will be. Um, there will be opportunities for public comment, um, prior to any decisions that have been ma, that will be made. And, uh, Dr. Barr has not been instructed to, um, develop any legislative language yet. Uh, Mr. Lovelace?
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace. I live at seventy-six twenty Maple Avenue in Tacoma Park, and I'd like to speak, speak out for the, uh, low-income and disabled tenants of Tacoma Park. We gotta remember, people in my position, we have to deal with the higher price of groceries, you know? They're not going to lower the price of food for us. We, you know, we have to, uh, buy our own clothes still, yet we, uh, yet I pay one-third of my income toward rent, and I'm only getting a very, very, uh, low fixed income. And I'm sure there are a lot of people out there who, in Tacoma Park, who are being faced with their, their properties being turned into condominiums. And they're gonna have a choice of, of eat or street, you know? Eat, if they want to eat, they have to live on the street. And we, and we cannot, uh, let that happen to, uh, our elderly people. Think about, think about how you would feel if your grandmother was faced with going on the street. How would you, how would you feel if you, if you were faced, uh, with a, with a major operation or an illness and you had to, uh, and your, uh, income was gone and then you had to face with the street? I was a carpenter at one time, making, uh, making over thirty dollars an hour, you know, in DC and the surrounding areas. I was also a tile setter, until, uh, one day I was hurt in a riot and then I went blind. I, I worked until the very day I went totally blind. And then I couldn't work anymore, I had to go on SSI. I couldn't live at my place in DC anymore, I was put out. I was put out before I even woke up from the anesthetic, I was put out the door like a dog. And, and that could happen to any one of us. I got a, I got a great, uh, place, I got a great place in Tacoma Park. And, uh, although we are still, still have to deal with some, some things that high-income don't even have to deal with, they just see it on TV. We have deep, we have drug problems in our area, we have crime in our area, we have this, we have that. And, uh, a lot of people now being faced with, uh, you know, being put on the street. That's one of my greatest phobias. What's gonna happen if my building goes condominium someday? It could happen. What, what's gonna happen, uh, if the rent goes so high that we ain't even gonna be able to afford to put food in our stomach? We gotta think about that. We ain't gonna be, afford the medical care we gotta, we gotta have. We're gonna have to give a choice of, you know, are we gonna, gonna have to say, or my, sh, so-and-so can't take care of their diabetic leg, they have to get rid of it so they can pay another month's rent? Are they gonna have to, uh, put, not get the medication or the, or the, or the food in their gut because they have to pay another, uh, the higher rent? No, I think we should, you, the city council should vote with a conscience. Vote with what you would do if your loved one or you yourself ended up in this situation and ended up, we're not knowing whether you're gonna end up sleeping on the street one night. And you gotta remember, it's cold out there this time of year. It is very cold. And now that Christmas is coming and the new year is coming, Christmas is supposed to be a, a time of peace and goodwill. Vote with a conscience. Vote the way the God, our Lord would have voted. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Laura Steiner? Laura Steiner to be followed by Fred Hernandez.
Good evening. My name is Laura Steiner. Uh, this is my first public hearing. Uh, recent, uh, tenant to Tacoma Park, and I appreciate the opportunity to voice some of my thoughts. Um, fortunately, I didn't prepare as much as some of my, uh, previous, uh, citizens have, and I really respect their thoughts. Um, but I did have some, some notes on the, the notification, and I flipped through the report, but I still had some of the questions. I don't know if this is the proper venue to voice those questions or not, and if it's not, I would like to be directed to the right place.
Well, you, you can address the questions to us, I don't know that we'll be able to answer them, but certainly you can.
Um, for the changes suggested by Dr. Barr, uh, I was wondering what the, the CPI is now and which CPI you would be using, because it's under my, um, understanding that there are different CPIs. There are CPIs for medications, there are CPIs for, um, all products, all products, uh, minus food. I'm just not sure which CPI you plan to be using for the rent increase allowances.
The, the CPI that Dr. Barr recommended was the overall CPI for all products. Now, that's one of the things that the council will have to decide and it's further discussions with Dr. Barr.
And for the elimination of capital improvement rent increase petition process, um, I was wondering, how will the rent increases be monitored? How will they be incorporated into rent? And how would the landlord be compensated?
You mean for capital improvements?
Yes.
Um, the, Dr. Barr's, um, proposal was that the, uh, annual increases be increased to a hundred percent of the CPI and that the capital improvement increases be eliminated. That was Dr. Barr's proposal. What we have on the table right now is his proposal. The council will have further discussions of that proposal, uh, at some point in January.
So this is not just a elimination of the petition process, it's a total elimination of all capital improvement rent increases?
Right. That's the proposal.
Isn't it combining those with the other petition process?
Right. It, um, as Councilmember Austin Lane is noting, it would also make the, what we call now the hardship petition process more accessible, and it would be a, more of a, um, um, process that was oriented toward, um, um, net, net operating incomes.
Okay. Because an elimination of capital improvement rent increase, to me, sounds like that would be, uh, not fair to the landlords. If they put money into the building, they should, I think, should be able to increase the rent.
I think they would still, uh, be able to go through that petition process, but it would be combining both of them into one, wouldn't it?
Not, not for specific capital improvements. I mean, we, we'll talk about it at more length, but, you know, I think the answer to your question is, the, Dr. Barr has made, uh, recommendations which are not in, uh, detailed form as of yet. He made general recommendations to the council and we will, um, refine them in our future discussions. So we may not be able to answer your questions this evening.
Thank you for that, because I understand that, um, those, some of my questions or some, some variant of them have been, uh, just the need for more clarification has been noted previously, and I appreciate your, your, uh, addressing that. Um, and, uh, limited rate increases, um, I guess I was wondering what that would be based on? What does limited mean? Were there limits before? Um, I understand that it could have been based on CPI and improvements, but...
Um, you're talking about the increases at vacancy? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Um, again, that's an item that the council will have to determine in, in future discussions. This is, we're dealing with a, a proposal in concept that Dr. Barr has given us, and we haven't, um, refined it down to the specifics yet. We wanted to get the sense of what, um, people in the city, both landlords and tenants, felt about these concepts before we talk about them at the specific level.
Well, thank you very much as a tenant, thank you.
I find the questions very helpful, and I would appreciate it if you, uh, you or any of the other, uh, people here tonight would like to send, uh, the questions, you know, to us, and they're things that we can cover, you know, during our discussions in January.
And there was mention of a list, sir? For the council?
Um, well, you can, uh, get addresses, email addresses for the council and the city's website. They're all there, and, and you can send us emails. You can also send emails to the city clerk, um, and she will keep things for the record.
And also distribute them to all of us.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, Fred Hernandez followed by Rosa Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, city council members. Um, I did take some notes, I didn't repair a speech, uh, but I'm here to represent tenants underclass, uh, lower than middle-class people. Um, most of the landlords that have been speaking here were, uh, of, uh, single units, uh, family homes per se, uh, that have been turned into apartment buildings. Um, we represent more of a larger unit, park-rich apartments, I reside in, uh, Park Towers and the other, uh, larger buildings on this, uh, in Tacoma Park, which is, uh, we understand their pain, but also, we have, uh, not every person that lives in Tacoma Park that can't afford their rent, uh, wants to live in a slum or is a crook. Um, these, uh, everybody does credit checks, um, background checks, and income checks. They know how much a person earns. Uh, maybe they cannot, uh, base their, their rent on that, uh, information alone, but we also can be left out in the cold because we're honest people. Um, maybe we just have our high school, uh, uh, diploma, maybe a GED equivalency, a, a training program, and that's all we can pay. This is, uh, Tacoma Park, this is, uh, you know, not, not Potomac. You know, it's, uh, it's not a slum, we only have five murders here, uh, uh, this year alone, there was none last year, and that's, you know, you compare that to a larger city like Rockville, that they could charge you anywhere from a two-bedroom... charge you anywhere from a two-bedroom apartment, $2,000, maybe $3,500 when I was pricing them, when I, when I received my hardship petition. What I want to say here today is, we as a people do not use, the landlords that have the smaller units. Maybe there can be change for those people, maybe exempt and stuff like that. When you're talking about the larger corporations, Southern Management and, and, and the Park Towers and, and the exit houses, that they have income coming in, they cannot tell us, okay, that they, they unable to operate because if they were unable to operate, they would get out of business. You know, there was a, a small owner also that said that he was doing business, his family's been doing business in forty-six, in nineteen forty-six. He's still here. It can't be that bad. If he was that bad, he would have moved out a long time ago. His family would have made that change. They'd have went to Ocean City. They'd have went to Elliot. You know, they would have went somewhere where the property, of course, the value's going to triple because of the business that's coming in. We're blue collar here. That's why we have the metro system that we have. We can walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Rosa Sanchez, Rosa Sanchez to be followed by, it looks like Lacue Bellet. Is Ms. Sanchez here?
I'm right here.
Do you want to speak?
I want to speak.
Okay, all right. Lacue Bellet, followed by Maxie, it looks like Hillary.
Hillary.
Hillary. Lac, I'm sorry, Lac, it looks like, can you read that? It looks like Lacue Bellet from 7600 Maple Avenue?
He left.
Okay, he left. Maxie Hillary, do you want to speak?
Good evening. Hi, Terry, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Glad you're here.
Thank you. This is the third time I've been in front of you before. And unfortunately, I thought I was having to go to a meeting late tonight and they cut me loose and I did not get a chance to, one more time print that, but it's been submitted to the city clerk a couple of times.
Okay.
So I'm going to pull up out of my pea brain here what I talked about last time and try to bring it back around to what you're talking about today. I live on Chaney. My landlord owns nine buildings. And I will add that I love my apartment. So the idea that, well, if you don't like it, leave, that's simply not an option. I like my apartment. I like my neighbors, I like my town. Yes, my cat's still missing. Okay. All right. First of all, I take offense with any landlord that says, well, look at that person's income, they don't deserve rent control. Because where I sit right now, I look back just a few years and remember having to make choices. Will it be rent? Will it be the phone bill? You know, I can remember times going to the church and saying, I'll clean your kitchen if you help me keep my power on. So I may be doing okay now at this time in my life, but it wasn't very long ago that I was a person, you know, really not doing quite well. And so the arrogance of any of us who are, you know, living far above the poverty line to make judgments on anybody else, to me, is unacceptable. And, and exactly like Mr. Lovellis said, you know, it could happen to anybody. You could have a $500,000 home and tomorrow a catastrophe hits your family, catastrophic illness, anything, and you may not be sitting quite as pretty. So I want to leave that one to the side. My landlord owns nine buildings. He charges us for capital improvements with impunity. I paid, I was assessed $300 for a toilet. $250 for a broken light in my dining room that when I moved in worked, it hangs off a cord. It's damn dangerous. He wants $250 to fix it. His handy person said to me, I'll come in and fix that for you for 50 bucks. Only my landlord says, hey, the only one who can fix this is me or somebody I assigned to do it. I've never seen a receipt. Okay? He charged somebody 25, or it was probably $50, when you look at the list of capital improvements, for a smoke alarm. And a lot of the things, I was, I was assessed for new flooring for my apartment that was done a full six months before I even looked at the place. So when you talk to me about, you know, capital improvements, I have asked again and again, will you please lay out a definition? This is a capital improvement and this is a routine repair. That's never been decided. So when I start thinking about a, an increase, right, 2%, 4%, whatever, I say, until these things are clear, you know, it seems as if even with this rent control, it hasn't been a death knell for income because they've been able to assess capital improvements with impunity. I've never seen a receipt.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And one more thing I want to, and so I want to see more transparency, but I want to add one thing that...
Can you send it to us? Can you send it to us?
I have sent it to you three times.
Okay.
I've never once received a response.
Well, we probably put it in the record, would be my guess, as to, as to...
Okay, one more thing on these capital improvements. Landlords can write them off as taxes. What can tenants write off?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Well...
And, and I really would like to see that transparency and I, I do not want to bar our landlords from having the right to make a profit. That is a right. But I need to see more transparency and I see the way it's working now. People just, I don't let them do repairs anymore. I say, you know what, let the building go to hell.
Oh, thank...
And so what happens? It goes into disrepair. What's your address?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. What's your address?
We've got, we've got addresses for everybody who's speaking. Sandra Elpenier, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, to be followed by Xenon, whose last name, I'm sorry, I can't read.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sandra Elpenier. I reside at 8508 Flower Avenue. I'm the president of the association there and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to talk. Just about, probably two or three years ago, we, we have had terrible landlords, but about two, three years ago, we had a new guy come in. And when he was purchasing the building, I remember telling him that the cost of the building the guy was asking for was above the market, that he shouldn't take that price. And it was rent control. Well, now, we're talking about rent control issues and stabilization. And Tacoma Park Voice of February of this year, there was mention in it about rent stabilization in University of Maryland College Park. They instituted that legislation in 2005 because of the high cost of pricing for the students. So obviously, a lot of people here who don't know that, it's on the, it's on the internet. Why? Because people need to be able to afford where they live. Okay? I think a lot of people buy property here because it's a good deal. We have a lot of people that come in here that move into Tacoma Park, not because it's a slum, because of its historical value of the clean neighborhoods, there's low crime here. People leave their door open because they feel safe. There are reasons why people are moving into Tacoma Park, Tacoma Park in such great numbers. Okay? And the people, the reason why people are leaving places like Rockville and they have to commute three or four hours to get to work and it's impacting their families. Another, another newspaper on the ninth of, of this, of this year by Valerie Irvin that was interviewed, she talked about affordable housing, transportation, and public education, saying that if we do not address these issues, we're going to lose mass people out of the state of Maryland, including Tacoma Park possibly, because there has to be affordable renting for all people. So I think it's upon the, the community and to decide what is affordable, what will benefit both the tenants and the landlords. The landlords get to write, write off a lot of things. I heard a lot of people make comments, the buildings are not being fixed. Things are being broken down. No one addresses those issues. Those issues are real to the people that live there. We should not have to be told, well, you can move out. Well, why did you buy the building if you had no intention of fixing it? In my building, we gave out our rights for them, for the guy to buy the building if he would fix it. Well, a lot of things have never been fixed. Okay? So I think there should be transparency, like the young lady said, there should be a mixing of minds. If we need to, let the landlords and the tenants and you all sit down and figure out something. I think go beyond a report. I think go beyond what was on a paper, a piece of paper. These are real people who have real issues, who live in this community. Okay? And I think we bring a lot of benefits to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm apologize that I'm not going to get this name right. It looks like Zynoe, Esso? Ah, okay. Yeah, it's, it's not that I don't know you, it's I don't recognize your handwriting.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have participated many times to this issue in different hearings. I'm not very well-prepared tonight because I didn't see this handout. We are very busy also. Me and my family, when we moved to this city, it was big, not for anything else but education. And when our children grew up and got to another area to go for schools, and now we remained a lone, single mother, we have also families to help, extended families, catastrophes, tsunamis, things happen all the time. But the sad thing is when we see here now, you are going to get away without thorough analysis and impact, on the impact of the people. Salaries, wages are frozen last four years. I didn't get any increase. Health insurance kept increasing. Food even is not available easily at the same affordable prices we used to have it before. I always attended these meetings most of the time by my people's color, alone, you witnessed. The sad thing is, if you do this, you will kick us out. You will create a drama. Council members, county, everybody we elected, we are citizens. You talk about these things, but nothing will happen. It looks like gentrification for me. I'm nasty. I was nice, but I cannot say nice things about what's going on now. I noticed, I lived in the city 12 years, but it's sad to see how we are ending up, maybe some of us homeless, some of us, difficulties, places that didn't want to live in. It started gentrification, land speculation, land grab, property. It started with buying these buildings and converting them to condos. You never stopped them. You were watching. This is wrong. I didn't move here for rent. I lived in the district and I had wonderful, affordable, nice area and affordable house rent. I don't know what you're talking about now. There are maybe groups who want to move. I, I am very well-observed lady, I'm very well-informed. I see all the time in every street, one, two houses going to be sold daily. The single house, homeowners. Now it's our turn? This is sad. You should do something. With the county and the state, get sons, HOC involved it. Don't forget also, single mothers alone who have, whose children grew up and are independent because they are not in any IRS box state. There is nothing for a tax exemption for them. We pay a lot of higher fees in the communication these days. Nothing is being done.
Well, thank you for your comments. It looks like Ralph M. Bright. Ralph M. Bright. Anyone can submit additional comments to the city clerk and she'll make sure that the council receives them. Yes, Ms. Powell?
Good evening, Mayor Porter and council members. My name is Patricia Powell and I am the president of Houston Arms tenants association. I am here to express my concerns regarding the possible amendments to the rest, rent stabilization ordinance. The proposal for limited vacancies is a wonderful idea. Without it, most landlords will be encouraged to retaliate against the tenants by giving a 60-day no cause for other excuses to increase vacant units in their building. And this is one of my greatest, greatest concerns because it is happening now. I'm also glad to see that there was reference made to the seller-buyer disclosure. However, it does need to be taken a step further and there should be a signed acknowledgement of this disclosure on file with the city. What I'm trying to understand is how landlords can come into Tacoma Park, knowing that there, there's rent control here, acquire so many properties, like this young lady was saying, nine different properties. And you have to, I have to ask myself, is it based on the fact that they want to help the citizens of Tacoma Park or is it based on greed? So they come in, they acquire the property at low rates, then they want to raise it and increase the prices. If they cannot recoup the monies quickly, then they want to sell the properties. So it's a matter of jumping on the bandwagon. This one sold the property for 3.4 billion dollars, so I want to sell my properties for 3.8 million dollars. And if you really look at it, it goes beyond supply and demand, it's a matter of greed. That's just the bottom line. And in closing, the city of Tacoma Park and the entire state of Maryland needs to have legislation in place protecting tenants from all, from the ready increase in condo conversions. Because if this does not happen soon, all of the rest stabilized housing stock you have right now is going to diminish. Okay? So having these meetings on the ordinances and the amendments is pointless. It is pointless. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have gotten to the end of the, the list of people who've signed up to speak. Would anyone else who's here like to speak to this issue? Please come up to the microphone and, and would you identify yourself for us?
Hi, my name is Terry De La Santa. We own two properties at 8204 and 8206 Houston Court. And I also live in Tacoma Park. And I just wanted to clarify one thing. I think a number of landlords, like myself, we purchased in Tacoma Park because we love this neighborhood. I've pre-existed rent control and we are currently selling our properties. The last two years, we've had severe losses due to 36% utility increases and we can no longer afford to do so. We already sold one rental house that we had that we couldn't break even on and now we're currently selling to five-unit apartment buildings. And I think what you're going to see is the mass exodus of landlords. As far as this proposal, I've read it over carefully. There are a number of good points, but I think it's too little, too late. You have to take massive changes if you want to continue to have rental stock in Tacoma Park and if you want to continue to have landlords like myself. I know my tenants would say, because we do most of our own maintenance, they would say that we take very good care of our properties, we're not slumlords. And I've had a lot of dealings with the housing administration and they can back me up on that. But it's just too little, too late and we're tired and we're going. So I hope that you will make this change to help other landlords.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Vincent Abel, the property manager for 7667 Maple Avenue. And I've reviewed the executive summary. There are some good points in it, but as the last speaker said, it's a little, you're late and it, it's just a little. You need to do something to preserve the housing and rentals in the city. We've, you've controlled the income for over 25 years, but Councilmember Williams, you've never controlled my gas bill. You've never controlled my water bill, my sewer bill, my electric rates. You've artificially controlled the income, but you've done nothing to control our expenses. The city doesn't help us with lower insurance. And the hardship petition, it works, you know, afterwards. When you all put together your budget for the city, if you see your gas bill is going up 30% for next year and your electric increase is 38%, you don't budget 2% on that line item for electric for next year. You budget the increase that Pepco has proposed, don't you? You have to. The way you've designed this, we have to bleed first before you give us a rent increase. And that needs to stop. You, you need to give the CPI... You need to give the CPI increases for rent, and landlords who pay the gas bill need another 1% every year. And if the landlord who pays all the electric, they need another 1% a year. It's not rocket science. I mean, you've got to see that every year. What we should be getting is the amount that you all run this city. You're running a business, this city. Whatever you increase your budget each year by, that's what your rent stabilization should be. That's what it takes you to maintain adequate facilities in this city. That's the real cost in the area. That's what we need. But if you look since 1990, and look at what your budget has gone up every year versus the rent stabilization, you're going to see a huge disparity. But that's really what it costs you to run the city and to pay the light bills. And you need to put forth the vacancy de-control. It just needs to be vacancy de-control on a normal occurrence. You know, like if someone-
Could you summarize, please? Could you wind up?
If you could, the vacancy de-control would stop a lot of your petitions in-
Can you wind up?
Okay, there was just one or two more points that I wanted to address. One was the vacancy de-control. I think unnatural turnover, either eviction for cause, or when somebody leaves, that's the best time to adjust it. And the, to go back and to try to adjust the base year to 2000, that amounts to a taking. You've artificially kept our income low for 20 years, done nothing to control the expenses, and then now you want to use that now as a new base year. That, in essence, would be a taking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abel. I appreciate it. If you have additional comments or anything additional you'd like to get to us, you're welcome to email us directly, send it to us, or email or send it to the city clerk.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? I, go ahead. No, go ahead, to the gentleman.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am a resident of Tacoma Park, has been for, have been for the last eight years. And I also work for a landlord.
Okay.
So it helps me that my rent is cheap.
Can you give us your name?
Oh, my, I'm sorry. My name, my name is Edwin Eder.
Edwin?
Edwin Eder, last name is E.T.I.
Okay, thank you.
It helps that my rent is cheap. But I think for everyone who has been up here tonight, you're either bashing the landlords or the city government, and, or being disrespectful to the residents, on all ends of the spectrum. I think we are ignoring an issue. We have to work, find a way to have the residents and management work out something. There is a specific issue. The issue is, the landlords have to be able to operate the community. The assumption that landlords are not proud of their buildings, and are not, do not want to provide the most, the best quality living for their tenants is flawed, because they want to be that. And I'm sure that there are many residents, many tenants, like myself, who are very proud of their homes. We don't want to lose our homes. I don't want to lose my home. But the fact of the matter is, if the landlord cannot operate, we're not talking about being able to operate the facility at this point. We're talking about losing money year after year after year. That is what the issue is. And at some point, it's going to break. And we are going to lose our housing, whether we like it or not. So this is the time that we have to use to figure out what is going to happen, what we can do to remedy the situation. Like the gentleman said, you can control the rents. But we still have to pay the same amount of money that Geico charges for insurance as somebody in Rockville. You still have to pay the same token bill as someone in Potomac, Maryland. You can't control the other costs. So I think that is what the city government needs to explain to residents, so that we understand that this, we are in this together. It's not the landlords and the tenants. We are in it together. This is our city. We have to make it work. And I think that's what everybody's avoiding. That is the question that everybody's avoiding. We can't stay in the building if the landlord lives. But there are, because I am, I am privy to that information. It's not just one apartment community. There are buildings in the city of Tacoma Park that will actually cost less if they're vacant. They are. But it does not serve our purpose as residents of Tacoma Park. So what needs to happen between the city and us and the landlords, we need to work out something, a viable option that is going to be equitable, and that's going to work for everybody. But the city seems to be avoiding it. The landlords don't seem to be talking about it. But that is what the issue is. That is what the issue is. It's, I think it's, without going into the big figures, the CPIs and all, it's simple. You have to be able to run the building, even in a way that means you're not making any money. If you're just evening up at zero, at this point, the landlords are not doing that. They are, they are losing money, but they cannot continue to operate the building and such. And landlords are proud of their properties, and they want to provide quality housing for the tenants. So something needs to work out. I think that's what the issue is.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to this topic? Anyone else would like to speak to the? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Michael Morelli. I own a small building on Manor Circle. It's an eight-unit building. I had not planned to speak tonight, but some of the comments that I've heard from other people spurred me on a little bit to talk about my situation. I've been a poverty owner since, oh, the 1960s. And in the last seven or eight years, I bought two properties, two single-family houses in Tacoma Park. And in June 2004, I bought the, this eight-unit building on Manor Circle because I loved the architecture, and I loved the way the neighborhood, et cetera. Not because I thought I was going to make a whole bunch of money, but it looked like at least I was going to break even. Much to my disappointment, despite all my work and efforts to keep it up, I managed to lose, I've managed to lose money every year since I've owned it. And I will begin considering selling, I will probably sell it come next year. I have wonderful tenants. I've always had good tenants, and I've always taken care of them. Luckily, I have other properties that, you know, sustain me. I do make my living from renting properties and managing them. They're not for somebody else, just for me. And I used to be a federal employee back in the 70s. The proposal that's come up now isn't going to solve much of anything. My situation is such that anything that is on the board will not cure my situation. Myself or whoever else buys that building will probably continue to lose money on it. Mostly because of the age of the building. It has a lot of repairs and upkeep. Mostly because of the incredible increase in utilities, especially electricity and gas over the past couple of years. And I filled out some sort of a survey, oh, I guess it was earlier this year, about utility costs. And I, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what the result of that survey were. But, you know, my costs went up by at least 50% on utilities. And I pay, I pay everything. I pay gas, I pay electricity, and I pay water. My, so I, I used to live in New York City at the time when they had rent control. And I did see situations where people with tremendous wealth were living in apartments that were rent-controlled. That didn't work, and I don't think it's going to work here in Tacoma Park. I would suggest that perhaps you find a way to eliminate, eventually eliminate rent control, and at the same time, help those tenants. And it's the government's responsibility to help the tenants, not the landlords. Find a way to help them to maintain low-rant housing.
Thank you, Mr. Morelli. Anyone else would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? I think I'm not going to go through a second round. It's fairly late, and I know that we have other items of business that we have to take care of. So if there's no new people who would like to speak, I will call the hearing to a close. If anybody has anything that they would like to add to what they said, I would welcome them contacting members of the council by email or by letter, or contacting the city clerk with the information, and she'll make sure it's distributed to the council. I want to thank everyone who came to the public hearing and sat through all this very useful information. We will consider what everybody has brought to us when we next discuss this, which will be at some point in January. I will, I hope that I'm going to schedule opportunities for the council to discuss this in January and February. And I hope we have final language that we can consider by March. And thank you all very much. We will take all of your comments into consideration. Thank you. It is getting kind of late, but I want to do one additional thing. Do we have a representative from Verizon here? I believe there was going to be someone from Verizon who wanted to talk to us about the franchise agreement.
He may be upstairs with Ms. Moffett.
Okay, well, let's do this. Let's take a break right now, and then come back in just a few minutes and take up the remainder of the agenda. Thank you all for coming.
[inaudible]
I would appreciate it. Thank you. The next item that I'm going to pull up is going to be item number three, which is consideration of a -- I'm sorry. If people could move the other conversations out of the room, that would be helpful. Item number three, which is the resolution to consider the franchise agreement with Verizon Communications. And I understand that Lonnie, you're going to start us off by giving us some information here.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Brianna Gowing from Verizon Communications.
Welcome.
Who has come to join us tonight, in case you have any questions for them. As I indicated to you a few weeks ago, when we started this accelerated process, the city staff and I have been working with the county on the franchise agreement with Verizon, and it was voted on by the county council on November 28th unanimously, I believe, and it's been approved. I think that it was a very thorough process, and we had our couple of issues that we got resolved along the way. And so it is my recommendation to you tonight to pass the resolution that will allow the city manager to sign many papers to affect the franchise in Tacoma Park. As a co-franchiser, all the municipalities, same as with Comcast and with Star Power RCN, must sign their own franchise agreements, but it is the same agreement in the city. The agreements are, in totality, quite comparable with one another, and that's been reviewed by many lawyers, and I feel comfortable with their assessment that we have comparable agreements. We'll be receiving a 5% franchise fee, as we do with the other two cable providers, and a 3% peg fee, a portion of a 3% peg fee, to support the channel, as we do, most specifically with the RCN, and that's supposed to be the equivalent to the Comcast franchise. So we're in the middle service area, which is there are three basic service areas, and I've asked Brianna to bring a couple of maps, and she has a few extras, which I'll deliver a couple to the city clerk, and she can pass them down to you.
You did.
You did. Oh, she gave them.
Yes, I think you've got copies here.
Yeah, just so that you can get a sense of it, and let her just address that, and then we can see what questions you might have.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm very happy to be here tonight, talk about this. The map that you have in front of you shows Verizon's, what we call, wire centers, a lot inside the county, the kind of jagged lines. So as you can see, these were all done before. Most of the cities were here, and Tacoma Park is actually served by three different Verizon wire centers. So we are working on providing fiber in the Riggs Road Center, that'll start next year, and the Chilum Wire Center, that's also in Prince George's County. I believe that's -- we're going to start work there in 2008. These may get moved up, but being in the middle service area, we have made some commitments, and that would be that we'll be providing cable service to what we consider significant numbers of subscribers within three years, to at least 50% of subscribers within four years, and to all residents within the middle years. So what we'll have to do is start putting the fiber in, and those are kind of like the longest possible dates. We're really trying to work as fast as we can, maybe move everything up, but those are kind of outside dates. So if there's any questions...
One of the issues that came up at the county council level was to define the terms of what was the middle service area, and I think Verizon wants to accelerate service, but they're agreeing, they have permitted to provide to all of the households access to the service to all households by the end of the fifth year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that would be like the last household, not, you know...
Right.
Well, we appreciate the fact that the agreement that's before us is very similar to the agreements that we've signed with the other providers. That was something that we were concerned about. I also appreciate the clarification on what it means in terms of initial, middle, and extended service areas. So that's very helpful also. I understand that there are some related questions that we might have regarding other Verizon services which council members are concerned about, and I think Councilmember Siemens had brought a couple of issues up at another meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And I'm just looking at your map here. I would say that I'm talking primarily about, from my perspective, about the Silver Spring Plant.
Okay.
The -- and, you know, I've had a number of constituents, and my own personal experience has been, you know, a lot of telephone service outage in that area. And I understand in talking to your service personnel that the infrastructure is pretty old in that service area, and it is -- they find it difficult to make these repairs because they have a limited number of wires. They have old wires hanging on the poles, and with the increased usage of electronic media, as you know, they're challenged to find enough conductors to provide the service. And when, basically, when they're, you know, have a problem with one of the conductors, they don't have a lot of options because there's such a high usage. And I was just -- I had raised the question when you had come here before about, you know, our support for the cable service, and the question was, you know, can we get what you do now right before we go on to another product line? And I just wonder what plans you have, and maybe some specific dates, to actually, you know, upgrade the equipment and the lines specifically for the Silver Spring Plant.
Okay, we feel the answer is fiber, and that's why we're, you know, putting fiber in all over the country. Right now, I don't have a date for the Silver Spring Wire Center. Originally, it wasn't on the early rollout, just because there were a lot of multiple dwelling units and a lot of businesses. And last year, at this time, we didn't really have a solution for doing that. But since then, we have figured out, in most cases, how to technically deliver the fiber service, our fiber service, to multiple dwelling units. So I can check and see, you know, if we have a new date, but right now, I don't have a date for Silver Spring. But I know it's important.
It would be real helpful to me to have a date. You know, I have people calling me. My own experience was I couldn't get DSL to work in my house because of the quality of the lines coming down our road. We had some trouble, I guess, at Public Works in getting our equipment there to work. I have constituents who live along Maple Avenue here, who, you know, spend hours at a time with the technical support, dealing with DSL issues. And it's -- I've also had tenants have to wait for a week to get their phone serviced just because of the difficulty that your technicians face because of the aging infrastructure. And, you know, at one level, it would be helpful for me to be able to have some kind of answer to tell them that, well, maybe by 2007, 2008, you know, we're going to have a replacement that's going to be, you know, resolve those issues to a great extent, and maybe if you come back with 2012, then I have something to argue with you about. But right now, it's very frustrating to have the, you know, the service drops at such a frequency, and not really have any hope for the future or any idea of when it's going to get resolved.
Okay. I'll definitely take that back and see if I can get you a better date.
I appreciate that. The other thing, since I have the floor, and just like to ask about, make sure I understood that the Tacoma Park station is going to be carried also on the Verizon cable?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. All the Montgomery County peg channels will be.
Okay.
And it's going to be the same channel number?
Don't think so.
I don't believe so, because that's already been determined, since it took about two years to get the agreement done in Montgomery County. So there is money set aside for advertising, for the county to advertise the new channel numbers.
And then my last question is, and this is really for Councilmember Williams' constituents, there is a section of his district that is not served by Comcast, and at least not Comcast-Montgomery, that is served by Comcast-Prince George's County.
Also Councilmember Clay's district.
And I would just like to make sure that you're going to be providing the Montgomery County peg to all residents of Tacoma Park.
Okay. As far as I know, yes, that's all worked out.
Do you want my two sentences on that topic?
Sure.
For the record. The reason that that exists is because, as you recall, Tacoma -- and for the benefit of background, you know, Tacoma Park was once one-third in Prince George's County and two-thirds in Montgomery County. And when unification occurred into Montgomery County, an additional section of the unincorporated area got itself into the city limits at that time. Am I saying that? Look, you're frowning at me. Okay, and...
He chuses...
I thought, did I say something wrong?
Just rugby today.
So new people came into the city limits, and new households came into the city limits at that time. Cable was always franchised in one county, in Montgomery County, from the original franchises in the early '80s. Those additional households, 1,500 households, Susie probably remembers, were served by the Prince George's County cable system. And as a result, they should have Comcast-Montgomery, Comcast-Prince George's. Comcast-Montgomery keeps telling me that they are serving all of those homes, but you have indicated that there are some who say they can't get it. But they should be able to get it now, by now.
And I...
But that's why they weren't in the Montgomery County system, because they weren't in the original city limits back in the early '80s.
They were in the city limits, but not the county limits?
No.
No, they weren't in the...
They weren't in the city limits.
Okay, you're talking about the section of people who are outside the city.
The annex area, yeah.
Got you.
Sorry. So they were served by Prince George's County cable.
So if there are any still having difficulty doing that, then they can get in touch with you, and you can put them in touch with us.
Please have them get in touch with me, and we will get it sorted out, address by address, if they are, so...
Fantastic.
Yes.
Sorry to talk about your competition tonight.
But it is pertinent to the current discussion, because hopefully Verizon will be serving the whole city limits.
Thank you.
That's actually the question that I wanted to ask.
I'm sorry.
Is how they will serve the city limits. Because I've been really frustrated by trying to contact Comcast, and it's just impossible to figure out if you're talking to Montgomery County, to Prince George's County, or to DC, and they operate everything out of these different service centers. And this is for a rental house that I have in College Park, but I manage whatever it is they want, and that's what they pick. But can you tell me how the residents of Tacoma Park, then, will interface with Verizon around the service? Will it all be treated as a single unit? And will there be a single phone that you call into? And if you say, "I'm at this address," will you have to hang up and dial five other numbers before you get somebody who helps you?
No. We have got the latest, greatest data-to-the-art system, and it's one number, and there's one website, and that number will take care of everything, transferring you if you need to, making sure you go to the right place. You are not going to have to call another number. It's all done in the system.
Okay. Because while it's important for Lonnie to understand the history, and probably for the council when they're negotiating different things, for the residents, they really want to have a single interface, and they don't really care about anything else. They just want to get service quickly, so...
I don't blame them.
Good to know.
May I say that customer service issues occupied a major part of the discussion at the county council, and major kudos are due to Marilyn Preisner, who is now the council president, but was the chair of the MFP committee. She has labored long and hard, and Brianna will attest to that on behalf of the residents, so that good customer service practices are ensured and that good data are collected. And it was contentious, and it was right up to the last minute, a little bits of negotiating, and I think that she went to bat for the consumer in a big way, and she deserves our, you know, our gratitude, because she did an awesome job, really.
Yes, and I do want to note that Marilyn Preisner has, in the past, also been very consistently sort of the council leader on cable and similar kinds of issues. And I've had a number of conversations with her, and she's been very helpful to us on those issues, and we very much respect her expertise and her diligence on those issues. She's been extremely good.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions or comments, other members of the council? We have then before us, and if you're looking for the -- I had a little trouble finding the resolution. It's about five pages from the back.
Sorry about that. We should put it in a different order. I thought you wanted to read the whole franchise.
Well, yes. And in great detail.
At 10 o'clock.
So the resolution is before the council.
Move the resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments? Are there any public comments on the resolution? Yes, please go up to the microphone.
Good evening. I would like to ask the council not to -- I see in the agenda here, council to vote on the resolution. No, please. We didn't study well this portion. We have seen piles from the county, and I was there. One of the testimonials in that last hearing, Ms. Moffett knows about that, there were amendments done. I never received it. My question is, that's one thing. Second, Verizon has to address why it reports, credit report, on its phone customers. Verizon started doing that three years ago without telling us. And I was just, I had raised the question when, when you had come here before about, you know, our support for the cable service and, and the question was, you know, can, can we get what you do now right before we go on to another, another product line? And I just wonder what, what plans you have and maybe some specific dates to actually, you know, upgrade the, the equipment and the, and the lines specifically for the Silver Spring plant?
Okay, we feel the answer is fiber and that's why we're, you know, putting fiber in all over the country. Right now, I don't have a date for the Silver Spring Wire Center. Originally, it wasn't on the, the early rollout just because there were a lot of multiple dwelling units and a lot of businesses. And last year at this time, we didn't really have a solution for doing that. But since then, we have figured out, most cases, how to technically deliver the fiber service, our fiber service, to multiple dwelling units. So I can check and see, you know, if we have a new date, but right now, I don't have a date for Silver Spring. But I know it's, it's important.
It would be real helpful to me to have a date. You know, I have people calling me. My own experience was I couldn't get DSL to work in my house because of the quality of the lines coming down our road. We had some trouble, I guess, at Public Works in getting, getting our equipment there to work. I have constituents who live along Maple Avenue here who, you know, spend hours at a time with the technical support, dealing with DSL issues. And it's, I've also had tenants have to wait for a week to get their phone serviced just because of the difficulty that your technicians face because of the, the aging infrastructure. And, you know, at one level, it'd be helpful for me to be able to have some kind of answer to tell them that, well, maybe by 2007, 2008, you know, we're going to have a replacement that's going to be a, you know, resolve those issues to a great extent. And maybe if you come back with 2012, then I have something to argue with you about. But right now, it's, it's very frustrating to have the, you know, the service drops and at such a frequency and not really have any hope for the future or any idea of when it's going to get resolved.
Okay, I'll definitely take that back and see if I can get you a better day.
I appreciate that. The other thing I, since I have the floor and just like to ask about, make sure I understood that the Tacoma Park Station is going to be carried also on the Verizon cable?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. All the, all the Montgomery County Peg channels will be.
Okay.
And it's going to be the same channel number?
Don't think so.
I don't believe so because that's already been determined since it took about two years to get the agreement done in Montgomery County. So there is money set aside to, for advertising for the county to advertise the new channel numbers.
And then my last question is, and this is really for Councilmember Williams' constituents, there is a section of his district that is not served by Comcast and I, at least not Comcast Montgomery, that are served by Comcast Prince George's County.
Also Councilmember Clay's district.
And I would just like to make sure that you're going to be providing the Montgomery County Peg to all residents of Tacoma Park.
Okay, as far as I know, yes, that's all worked out.
Do you want my two sentences on that topic?
Sure.
For the record. The reason that that exists is because, as you recall, Tacoma, for the benefit background, you know, Tacoma Park was once one-third in Prince George's County and two-thirds in Montgomery County. And when unification occurred into Montgomery County, an additional section of the unincorporated area got itself into the city limits at that time. Am I saying that? Look, you're frowning at me. Okay, and...
He just isn't...
I thought, did I say something wrong?
Just gonna be today.
So new people came into the city limits, new households came into the city limits at that time. Cable was always franchised in one county, in Montgomery County, from the original franchises in the early eighties. Those additional households, 1,500 households, Suzie probably remembers, were served by the Prince George's County cable system. And as a result, they should have Comcast Montgomery, Comcast Prince George's. Comcast Montgomery keeps telling me that they are serving all of those homes, but you have indicated that there are some who say they can't get it. But they should be able to get it now, by now.
And I...
But that's why they weren't in the Montgomery County system, because they weren't in the original city limits back in the early eighties.
They, they were in the city limits, but not the county limits?
No.
No, they weren't in the...
They weren't in the city limits.
Okay, you're talking about the section of people who are outside the city.
The annex area, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
So they were served by Prince George's County cable.
So if there are, if there are any still having difficulty doing that, then they can get in touch with you and you can put them in touch with us.
Please have them get in touch with me and we will get it sorted out address by address if they are, so.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Sorry to talk about your competition tonight.
But, but it is pertinent to the current discussion because hopefully Verizon will be serving the whole city limits.
Thank you.
That's actually the question that I wanted to ask.
I'm sorry.
Is how they will serve the city limits. Because I, I've been really frustrated by trying to contact Comcast and it's just impossible to figure out if you're talking to Monterey, to Montgomery County, to Prince George's County or to DC and they operate everything out of these different service centers. And this is for a rental house that I have in, in College Park, but I, I manage whatever it is they want and that's what they pick. But can you tell me how the residents of Tacoma Park then will interface with Verizon around the service? Will it all be treated as a single unit and will there be a single phone that you call into? And if you say, "I'm at this address," will you have to hang up and dial five other numbers before you get somebody who helps you?
No. No, we have got the latest, greatest data yard system and it's one number and there's one website and that number will take care of everything, transferring you if you need to, make sure you go to the right place. You are not going to have to call another number.
Right.
It's all done in the, in the system.
Okay. Because while it's important for Lonnie to understand the history and probably for the council when they're negotiating different things, for the residents, they really want to have a single interface and they don't really care about anything else. They just want to get service quickly, so.
I don't blame them.
Good to know.
May I say that customer service issues occupied a major part of the discussion at the county council. And major kudos are due to Marilyn Preisner, who is now the council president, but was the chair of the MFP committee. She has labored long and hard and Brianna will attest to that on behalf of the residents so that good customer service practices are ensured and that good data are collected. And it was contentious and it was right up to the last minute, a little bits of negotiating and I think that she went to bat for the consumer in a big way and she deserves our, you know, our gratitude because she did an awesome job, really.
Yes, and I, and I do want to note that Marilyn Preisner has, in the past, also been very consistently sort of the council leader on cable and similar kinds of issues. And I've had a number of conversations with her and she's been very helpful to us on those issues and we very much respect her expertise and her diligence on those issues.
Absolutely.
She's been extremely good.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions or comments, other members of the council? We have then before us, and if you're looking for the, I had a little trouble finding the resolution, it's, it's about five pages from the back.
Sorry about that. We should put it in a different order. I thought you wanted to read the whole franchise.
Well, yes. And, and in great detail.
At 10 o'clock.
So the resolution is before the council.
Move the resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Are there any additional council comments? Are there any public comments on the resolution? Yes, please go up to the microphone.
Good evening. I would like to ask the council not to, I see in the agenda here, council to vote on the resolution, no, please. We didn't study well this portion. We have seen piles from the county and I was there, one of the testimonials in that last hearing, Ms. Moffett knows about that, there were amendments done, I never received it. My question is, that's one thing. Second, Verizon has to address why it reports, credit report, on its phone customers. Verizon started doing that three years ago without telling us, without asking permission from the county or the state. I really, it doesn't bother me, I am always correct, I pay. But you reported me once because there was issues of fees you never addressed. You used to be a nicer company before. I am your customer for 14 years and I finally, you never, never, you changed it a lot. Everything you used to solve it by telephone. Now, that issue is wrong because reporting customers to the credit bureaus is wrong for $40, $20, $30 bill. People have problems, they could be late in their paycheck or, anything can happen. Vacation or holidays come on the day they send it. Service should start in this city at latest in 12 months. Because I know this city had been the first to be laid on fiber optics 11, 12 years ago when I moved to the city. We cannot accept waiting seven years or five years or three years, whatever you said in the other county franchise agreement. You have it because I have your, I had, this year I did stop your agreement. DSL, high-speed internet service through your fiber optic is a nice thing. Why can't you do that? Number four, you need to have better customer service. Verizon phone service and internet is cruciating. All holidays, federal, state, other major holidays, you are closed. How you want to run a business? Adding to your phone business, your internet business now, the cable? Excuse me. One more thing, the county, the city has to watch out, the fees they charge us all the time and I have issue, I will be submitting to the Public Service Commission. You never clarify so many fees you are charging us. A small basic telephone, I pay nearly $50. This is wrong. Thank you.
Perhaps I can answer the first question. There, there has been a lot of discussion at the county level and Ms. Moffett of the city staff has been following that in, in great detail and has covered, you know, in basic summary what the outcome of, of all of that was. And I'm comfortable with her analysis and, and her sense that the outcome is that the franchise proposals are similar to what we have with the other franchisees. So I think that would cover your first question about whether we know the outcomes of all these last-minute amendments and things. But as I understand, the other questions were about credit checks that are being done, about, about the, the issue of, of why you can't do cable sooner, given that this part of the county has been, has, has had fiber optics done. I believe those additional fiber optics were, were by Star Power and I think Verizon is going to be providing it through its own network, so it was, wouldn't necessarily be the same thing.
I'm sorry, could I talk?
Sure.
Could you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I didn't say credit check, it is credit reporting.
Okay.
Monthly bill of a telephone, $20.
Okay, so you're talking about...
Why Verizon is ruining people's credit for $20, $30. They could be late for one time because holiday when they sent it by mail?
Yes, I, I do understand that and, and I don't know if you can address that or whether you can, could get back to us with that information.
Okay, well, I can tell you that we really try to work with customers if they're having a problem paying their bill and we normally don't cut off service if they're willing to work with us on something like that.
But I think her, her question was, do you report to credit agencies a, an owed amount of small amounts, 20 or 30 or $40?
That's not my question. I know.
Okay, but the, the question would be, I guess, she doesn't feel that that's justified.
Well, I guess I'll have to probably do a little bit more research on that.
Okay, all right. And then I think the other question was about technical assistance or, or customer assistance being available on weekends and holidays.
We don't have the regular staff available on holidays, but we do have people who work around the clock. If there's an outage, we definitely have people who are available and they, you know, we work evenings, weekends.
But not necessarily, but for a major outage, not necessarily if an individual customer's having trouble with their service.
There's no customer service answer. There's a machine, a computer saying, "Sorry, I'll give you a call."
Yeah, and I think she's referring to a particular issue that an individual customer may have and not necessarily a, a region-wide outage or a, or a neighborhood-wide outage.
Can I?
It would certainly be helpful if you could get back to us on those issues.
Sure.
Any other comments? Okay, the resolution is in front of the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the resolution passes. And thank you for being here and we look forward to your additional information on some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see that we have someone here on the issue of the National Wildlife Federation Backyard Wildlife Habitat, and so I'm going to take that as the next item. This is a, a resolution following up on a discussion that this council's had about this program. The council supported the program and this resolution is before us to formally make the council support, to make the council support formal. Would someone like to move the resolution?
Sir, move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment on the resolution?
I'd like to encourage the council members to use the, the form that was given to them. I found it very useful to go through the checklist and see what we have in our backyards and what habitat is conducive to, to wildlife. And you'll probably find that you already qualify without making any changes or any major ones. So I'd love it if all of us could show our support for the city getting this recognition by having our own backyard certified. And I know that, that Bruce has offered to assist us in our endeavors, so.
And I appreciate that effort. My questionnaire is filled out all except for the part of what plants I have and I look forward after the holidays to completing that part and, and sending it in. Any additional council comments? Any public comments? Would you like to say anything?
Yes, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue. And I'm really glad to see our city appreciating its wildlife and appreciating its plant life. And I really appreciate our city taking, taking the lead again. Really makes me feel good. And it's great to document with what kind of wildlife, what kind of plants you have. And I hope everybody, you know, fills out the questionnaire and documents everything, even if the plants are illegal. I hope they come up and document them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Bruce Sidwell at 7209 Spruce Avenue. And I just want to say thank you very much, especially on behalf of the folks who've been working on this, just about a dozen or so, with the friends of Sligo Creek and, and the Tacoma Hort Club, as well as the Committee on the Environment, as well as others who don't belong to those particular ones, but just felt that this was something worth doing. I think, as Joy was saying, the, you can probably get certified without a whole lot of extra effort, but I think what the beauty of this program is going to be is that it's in the details. You begin to look at your yard a little bit differently and you begin to kind of see what's there, what was, what's there in terms of plants and habitat and things that you are supposed to be offering to wildlife. But then you begin to notice that, oh my gosh, there is some wildlife and you have to pick, well, then you may have to go buy a book and figure out what that butterfly is and what those other birds are and what your kid is asking you to, to, you to respond to. But, so the beauty, I think, of, in long-term will be in, in all these details that'll, your eyes will be more, everybody's eyes will be more open to. Anyway, thanks again.
Sure. And it's a good thing squirrels count because I'm doing just fine. Anyone else? All right, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the resolution passes. I am now going to move back to the initial item, which is the Resolutions Recognizing Outgoing Elected Officials.
You have eight resolutions before you recognizing...
One, one of which we've already passed.
One of which, yes, you have seven. Seven new resolutions before you recognizing officials that have been representing and assisting Tacoma Park for some time and we really appreciate their service. We have a resolution honoring Ida Rubin, state senator for many years. Peter Francho, who's moving on to be our comptroller for the state of Maryland. Gareth Murray, who's a delegate for us. Doug Duncan, leading his position as county executive. Howie Dennis, who represented the, his community in the Maryland State Senate and then in the county council. And while he was a member of the state senate, assisted us in winning the right to have the referendum that allowed for unification. Tom Perez, who we saw before. County council member Steve Silverman and county council member Mike Subin. And I just want to mention this representative staff, that each of these people have been really good to work with and have genuinely wanted to help Tacoma Park. And I really think that, you know, we all feel very strongly that they deserve a lot of appreciation for all this time and effort that they've put in serving the community.
I, I would agree that all of these members have been very helpful. Many of them have been our supporters during times that we got a great deal of assistance, both in terms of funding and in terms of assistance in other ways from both our state and, by, both our state delegation and our county council members. And we have an unusually large number of people who are leaving at this particular time, so I think it, it is appropriate for us to recognize their service to our community and that's what we're intending to do here. There was a suggestion that the council might want to read some of these resolutions into the record. I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting very skeptical looks here. We will, if, as, as we pass them, we will in fact send them along to the members who we're recognizing. And since a number of people couldn't be here this evening, I'm hopeful that at some point, some people might be able to make it at a later date and perhaps we can do a more formal presentation or we can do a formal presentation at some later venue. So we certainly...
Can we move them en masse and then make comments?
We could do that as a group, but I think it might be nicer to move them individually. We wouldn't, I, I understand that it's getting very late and I, and I can see that the council doesn't want to read all of them, but maybe...
Could we publish those, you know, prominently on the website?
Certainly, we can, we can publish them on the website and that might be very, might very well be an appropriate thing to do. But I suggest we just move through very quickly and, and do the resolutions one by one. The first resolution that we, I, this is done somewhat in, in order of seniority, I noticed. And the first resolution, which I would like to introduce myself, is commending the service of Ida Rubin to the Tacoma Park community.
Sir.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next resolution is commending Peter Francho.
Would you like to move that one?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any additional council comment? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next resol, any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Next resolution is commending Gareth Murray. Someone want to introduce that?
Move that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments? Any public comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The next resolution commends Doug Duncan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments?
If I can just say that if he can't come here to get it, I'd be happy to deliver it in person.
Okay, and, and that's certainly an option with, I have some, I, there's a couple people I would like to deliver it to myself also. So I, any council member...
And my understanding is that Peter Francho wants to come and get it, so.
Okay, good. And you, you had said that, that at a later date, he would like to come and...
That's right.
Have it awarded. And there may be other council members who would like to do that too. But I, I appreciate your suggestion and we could do that with other people if someone wants to do it. So the resolution commending Doug Duncan is before the council. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution passes. The next resolution commends Howard Dennis, who even though he didn't represent this district, nonetheless was very helpful on a number of items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments? Any public comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution passes. We did Tom Perez. Next one commends Steve Silverman.
Move the resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And the last, but certainly not least, is Mike Subin. Someone like to move the...
Move the resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, I'm sorry, any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the resolution passes.
Can I just make one comment about the recognition in general? I'm, I find it interesting that this is a, a group of people that are all doing a variety of things and I think that's commendable for those who have done so much in the past and are retiring, as well as for those who are moving to higher office or moving into the private sector. What is most outstanding is that they have created the foundation by which we can now go forward and I'm very appreciative and admire them very much for their many years of service and hope that they know that we are grateful.
And if, if I can just add that they've set a very high standard for service to this community and it'll make it easy for us to go to their successors in many cases and say, this, this is a minimum level of what we would appreciate and we're happy to work with everybody to make that possible.
Any comments? Okay, we will now move on to the next item, which is the Ordinance Regarding the Ward Five Special Election. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Thank you Suzanne. I know you did each of those resolutions individually and you got input from a number of members of the council. All right, the Ward Five Special Election. This is the second reading of the ordinance.
Send in.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance?
I just got one question, Mr. Lovelace again.
Yes.
I just got one question. Are they taking into account any need for absentee ballots or how people would do that on a special election?
Would, would the city clerk like to address the issue of absentee ballots in the special election?
Yes, our, our code provides for absentee ballots in the special election in, in the same manner as we provide them in regular elections. So absentee ballots will, will be available and people can submit applications anytime between now and the deadline, which will be, I don't have the date at my fingertips, but it's one week before the election is the deadline for regular, for submitting an application for regular absentee ballot.
And what is the deadline for getting the absentee ballot in?
Oh, at the closing of the polls on election day.
And, and someone who wants to get an absentee ballot should contact you.
Yes.
Contact the city clerk.
Contact the city clerk.
Thank you, that was my main question.
And to vote in this election, I should note that you have to be a resident of Ward Five.
Yep.
This is an election among Ward Five residents. Any other public comments?
When does nomination close? It's January 10th, 20 days before.
Someone asked me that, so I...
I think the calendar may be attached.
Good, thank you.
Yes, the, the calendar is attached and it does note that the, what is, a number of things, but the, yes, that's right. And the election itself is on January 30. Any other public comments, council comments? All right, this is the second reading of the ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin May.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance passes at second reading. The next item is the Resolution... The next item is the resolution amending the city's 457 deferred compensation plan to permit people to take loans from their-
Second.
And this is, I, I should note that this is the first of the two resolutions that we're going to pass on this item. You've got two attached, and we're talking about the first, is that, so people understand that's what they're moving. Okay. The resolution's been moved and seconded. Is there any council comments? I believe we've talked about this issue a couple of times. Any council comments? Any public comments on the resolution? All right, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. The second resolution deals with the loan guidelines for the loans under this plan.
Move it.
Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments or questions? Any public comments? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. The next item is the consent agenda. I will just read off the items on the consent agenda. We are making an appointment to the Committee on the Environment, an appointment to the Noise Control Board, and setting the council's holiday recess from the close of business this evening, or actually tomorrow morning, to January, to the opening of council business on January 8th.
Send it.
Sorry.
All right, the, the consent agenda is not subject to comment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda passes. All right, we are now moving to our work session discussion, which is a discussion of the schedule and process for the gym feasibility, considering the gym feasibility study, sorry. And we have, we have Suzanne Ludlow, and we also have Howard Cohn, who is the chair of the Liaison Committee. Oh, do you want to join us, too? Sure, come on. We have another member of the gym feasibility study. That's the gym, I'm sorry, the Liaison Committee. Getting kind of late.
Good evening again. This item has to do with, as a follow-up to last week's presentation on the, the results from the gym feasibility study that was done by ANCL Architects of Washington DC. And as we learned last week, there was a lot of information provided. There were three configurations of gym study to give us some information about what kind of possibilities there could be in terms of gym configurations and the costs related to those. That information was shared with the Community Center Liaison Committee, as well as with you, and there was some interest in some follow-up. And the questions that were to be, that are to be discussed this evening are, you know, what are the next steps? What public process should be pursued? And should we can extend the contract with ANCL Architects to do some further investigations at the feasibility study level? There were some discussions last week about possible public processes. I had put in the staff report, just mentioned a public forum. Councilmember Siemens mentioned more of a charrette possibility. After the discussion with the council, staff had some discussions about what might seem to work, given the kind of information that we had. And it was recommended that perhaps a process similar to that that was used at Carroll Avenue plans might be a successful one. Since we have perhaps, or we will have several kind of options to look at related to, you know, what might be, what there might be in terms of a gym or similar facility and the related placement locations and components, that perhaps there could be a mechanism by which the public could be invited to, in groups, look at a configuration, on a board, have somebody present what that information is, have some typical questions that are related to that kind of a project, that configuration. Write up the comments that that group has, is, on easel board or similar fashion. Also allow people to write notes, if they don't want to have them up on the easel board, have them more on a piece of paper that they could be submitted, so that we have the information on these various plans. The groups could rotate, so that they look at the, at the various possibilities. That, that process allows for some real discussion about what is wanted and what isn't wanted in terms of a facility. It does not really address, it would address to some extent, because you'd be looking at different kinds of facilities with different cost levels, but it doesn't really address the issue of borrowing and tax impacts, or all of those kinds of things that may be before you in the future, and that may be more appropriate for a standard public forum or public hearing. So those are the kinds of things that staff looked at in terms of the materials and the kind of information that we see before us. It seemed to fit the best. Generally, charrettes work the best when you don't have a plan on the table, when you want people to really brainstorm and start from, from a blank piece of paper, because you don't have something to work with. And, and we thought we do have some pretty good, different kinds of concepts, and we may get a couple extra concepts to look at. There's a lot of complexity, and there needs to be, I think, some input about what components have a lot of, what kind of desire there are for various components and levels of desire. And that may be something that works better in a group setting rather than a public forum setting. So those are the reasons that staff came up with that. What we would like to hear from you, and then maybe other possibilities, is what public process we should go forward, advertise, send out mailing perhaps about, so that the public would have an opportunity to participate.
I'd like to suggest, and considering these two questions, that maybe we take them in the opposite order from the order that you've got them in the memo, simply because I think that the item you have second, which is the-
Should the city extend this contract?
Yeah, is, is maybe more cut and dry than might be easier for us to, to begin with.
That's right.
That, that, there was some discussion on the council about this. It appears that the, under the current contract, the city manager could extend the contract up to $10,000. Have, have we had an opportunity to talk to them about how that would happen?
No, not specifically. These, the architects are happy to work with us at the hourly rate up to an amount. It may be as we talk with them, that we would prefer to kind of group it and have a, a flat fee under that $10,000 amount, but we've not had the time this week to-
Okay.
To finalize that. It would be something we'd want to work out with the, with the council.
So, so the maximum amount of money that would be spent on this effort would be $10,000, and that's basically what we're looking at this evening. So I guess the question before the council is, do we authorize the city manager to extend the contract in an amount not to exceed $10,000, to do the things that were specified last time, explore the alternative that the Liaison Committee wants, as well as some of the refinements that the staff would like to see?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yes. Yes. Okay, go ahead. I, I was looking at-
Whichever, go ahead.
I think got, got in ahead of you, Garrett.
What's the alternative that the-
Well, the, this is something that frankly, the city manager can do as, as part of her authority.
What's the alternative that the, the Liaison Committee wants to explore, wasn't explored?
Is looking for something in the three and a half million dollar range.
Do you, do you all want to address that issue?
Find out what can be built for the three million dollar range.
In the three million-ish range, yes.
We have some ideas, and rather than getting into, well, we would like to get into them with ANCL, because they're the professionals, but we've battled this back and forth at three different meetings, so we have an option that we want to cost out with them.
If you have a particular option you want to cost out?
We have some, we have some design changes that, and it, it, it has to be a back and forth.
Okay.
In order to, in order to see if we can arrive at something that is about three and a half.
Okay. I just wanted to restate what I said last time, which is that it's, I think, going to be, to me, it's pretty obvious that the gym's going to cost $8 million. And I think the more that you put out there, that it's possible to have a $3.5 million gym, and, and maybe if we started talking about it as the gym, there's the gym, which is a million and a half dollars, and then there's the completion of the community center, which seems to cost six and a half million dollars. I just think that the more you put it out there, that there's a three and a half million dollar solution, the harder it's going to be if it turns out that there isn't a three and a half million dollar solution, that maybe there's a six million dollar solution. I would just, I would rather look at cost out models, like maybe you could cost out a frugal model that is your, your minimal, minimalist model. I, I don't talk to anybody who finds that acceptable, though, I have to tell you. To me, to get the, the biggest amount of buy-in means the expanded fitness facility, the, the big gym. So I, and you don't have to comment, I just, I just want to-
Understood.
Throw that out to you.
Good point, but I think, and we agree there should be a public process, and we're just suggesting that as the next step before we get, we open it to everyone, that we would hope to create another board to put out at the, at the public forum, or what are, what are we calling it?
I don't know the right name.
Oh, am I right?
Sorry.
The public event that'll be held. So that's, that's, and we, we hope it doesn't cost $10,000 to get that option, is all we can say.
Okay. I just, I don't see a point in, in pursuing, if the $3.5 million option comes back to tell us that we can't have our bare minimum that we want, I mean, I would rather start with, cost out the bare minimum the best way that you can, than what can we have for $3.5 million?
I, I think we're talking about the same thing. I also wanted to just note that I'm not quite sure I understand the distinction you're making between the gym and, and completing the community center. Completing the, the gym is the completion of the community center, and since the building itself comes out to be about, as Councilwoman Ross Lane has noted, about a million and a half, but we can't float the building in air, and it's got to be located somewhere, so we do have site costs regardless of what we do.
I think the point that I'm trying to make is that there was an expectation of a $1.5 million gym, and I think it might have been you last meeting that pointed out that went, and that number came from the school districts, you, I think, as you-
No, no, it came from all three bids. Or not bid, sorry. It came from all three scenarios-
Right, but no, but the expectation that we might be able to build a gym for $1.5 million is, is based on, on school numbers, where they don't, they own, they own land free and clear, it's flat, they have all the parking that they need, and they don't have to have police holding cells. It's not, it's not to separate the idea of the gym from the community center, I understand the gym is part of the community center, I'm just talking about, there's, there's what you could do if you were really just talking about how a school builds a gym versus what we have to do.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that clarification. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Yeah, I, just following up on Councilmember Clay's observation that I, you know, we're interested in building the gym, I think is kind of the primary goal, and the, and then we have those other things that are community center related, such as the holding cell and, and parking, and, and facade around the library, and, and work on a plaza, and some other things. And I'd like to make sure that, that what we're talking about tonight is the gymnasium, and not those other things. I mean, we could, we still have a wish list that, that goes on down, you know, we've got kitchen we've talked about, there's a number of other things just certainly interested in doing, and, but yet I think if we're talking about the gymnasium, we'd want to be, to kind of isolate that at this point in time, to see what, what it is we can really do, whether we can afford to do a gymnasium or not, and, and kind of how we can afford to do that gymnasium. So I'd like to make sure that what we're thinking about contemplating doing, and I'm going to contradict myself a minute, but reserve that right, that what we're talking about doing would be just for the gymnasium.
What, I think that there's, what I guess what I had in mind was that we would be coming up with something that would get us a gym, and what's minimally required to have that attached functional and kind of minimum community standards on that. If there are things that can be done at a later time, such as put the facade around the library, that may not be, need to be a component of the cost estimate for this, but if there's something that's required for this gym, the bathrooms, moving, moving of the holding cells because of the location that's chosen, that kind of thing, I think you do need to have all of those places together.
Sure, so, so if you were to locate it where you had to have the holding cell moved, then?
Right, but I do appreciate that, that there may be work that we can do in our years. We, we may have phase four and phase five someplace, but I, I guess what I would envision is something that makes a reasonable package that needs to be pretty much done at once.
And then, I guess my contradiction is that I would like to, to have some restrictions on that, so that we do end up with a gymnasium that is a full-sized gymnasium with, with seating, rather than just a, a complete blank paper that, that allows for, you know, a half-court gym, saying that that's, that's what we would end up with, because I don't think that, I think that would be a waste of our money, I don't think we would want to do that.
Just, just to note that whatever alternatives are come, that the, this process comes up with the council, we'll still have an opportunity to, to talk to those.
I understand, but-
This is not a decision.
But I'm not sure we want to spend money for something we can anticipate-
I, I hear what you're saying.
That we aren't going to accept. If I can just finish, one other thing. I would like the council to agree to schedule a meeting with the county and the recreation department, to look at what can we do between now and when we do have a gym, to make sure that we have done the best that we can to schedule time for programs, and that we have programs planned for, to address the community that we're trying to target with a gymnasium, that we, that we're doing more than we're doing today to, to provide services to those residents of Tacoma Park until we do have a gym, and that's, that kind of says whether we have the gym next year or five years from now. I think that this year it would be possible to do something more than what we're doing now, and I have heard a lot of discussions about, well, we can't get the gym time, well, I think we need to sit down with our recreation department and the, the county here at this table, and find out what we can and what we can't do.
Okay, I, I think that's a reasonable request. The council, go ahead.
I, I would like to request that we also start considering financing options. This, this seems like a monumental task, when you look at it in terms of how are we going to raise that much money immediately, but when you think about financing it like we did part of the cost of the phase one and two, then it's, it's more doable. And I think that it certainly will require the city to take on debt if, if we are to complete this project. And I, I don't know about you all, but thinking about phase four and five and six is not a welcome thought. I think we need to get this done, and get it done well, so that when people look back on this project in 20 years, they don't see the piecemeal back area, or the drive-through, what is it, the bank, or something that, that Councilwoman Barry likes to point out. They, they don't see things that were started but never completed, they see the finished product, something that we can be proud of. And yes, it's been a rocky road, but should we turn back? I don't think so.
Yes?
And I, I'd like to propose that we, in addition to saying yes, extend the contract with ANCL, that we go ahead and approve, sending a mailing out with as much information as can be put together for that mailing at the time that it needs to go out, for the schedule that we set forth, that we do agree with staff's proposal to have a Carroll Avenue type process to try and pull some of that together, and that we follow that up with a public hearing.
Okay, I, I want to get the first piece done first.
I want to take a comprehensive approach, and I think we need to do them all. I don't need to talk about an individual one at a time, we need to do them all.
I agree with you.
Well, I think there's some concern about if we do a mailing, what the mailing includes, in other words, at what point we should do the mailing. I'm going to suggest, again, that we go ahead and say yes, if that's what we want to do to the AC, and are you, you're willing to say yes to that?
Yeah.
And then we can move on to the public process, which is a different thing. Okay.
Okay, but I'm proposing yes, 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 and yes.
Okay, you, you would like to do all of them. Okay, now, the, the next issue in terms of the public process, we have in front of us a suggestion for mailing, and I think there's issues about the timing of the mailing. I don't know if you all have a concern about that.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like it to wait until the fourth option is, you turn- Yeah, we'd like, it's a wait until the fourth option is determined to be viable or not.
It would seem to me that if we're taking the trouble and paying the cost to do a mailing, that we should wait until we've got as much information as we're going to have, sending out a mailing with partial information and then saying, oh, by the way, we appreciate...
No, that is proposing.
Okay, I'm just being clear with that, I wasn't sure from what you were proposing.
No, I said, be one with the timeframe that makes sense.
Okay. So, but you do want to do, all right, the proposal on the table is to do a, the process that the staff has suggested, followed by a public hearing. Do you mean on the same date, or...
No.
I think that would be at a different time.
Okay, all right, but it should follow it, because I think people are going to get frustrated if they go through that process, have some things to say, and that there's no part of that that gives them an opportunity to say something.
Right, I guess I would envision, and I haven't talked all of this out, but I would envision that you go through the Carroll Avenue-style information, you could get all that information, you provide a summary at the beginning of a public hearing, and then you talk to the financial elements and other elements at the public hearing.
Okay.
You're talking about Carroll Avenue, are you talking about the series of charrettes that were held?
I believe so. I believe this is the process where people had the boards up and they had, they divided into groups, and then they went to each one, and then they went and made the comments.
Okay, just to clarify, the Carroll Avenue project lasted five years?
I know, there was no...
I really don't recommend that. I think that it was a, you know, similar to the Maple Avenue discussion of redesign. We need to stay focused on the issue at hand, and not bandy about far too many options that really aren't in the scope of what this council was elected to deliver.
My understanding about the way this would work is there would just be a couple of options, say, three options that would be displayed, that would show that information, it would be the information from the liaison committee, it'd be some tweaked version of one or two of the other options that have already been identified. I would envision a lot of back and forth before we had those options, you know, informally with various folks, so that we had some agreement, that we have three kind of distinct things to look at, that will, was the kind of information that we want for the public.
Colleen?
So, I would like to make a comment then on part two, or I guess what was part one and is now part two, around the process, I'm just confused. So, the public forum idea, I think, is great. I think that this is, this is a really significant thing that we're doing, that is likely going to require bond financing, that's going to have an impact on people in terms of their, you know, exactly where the recreation is located, what it looks like, what its capacity is, plus other peripheral issues, and it's going to have a taxpayer impact, that will either result in increased taxes, or if taxes are going to remain the same, like, you know, a trade-off of other services in the city. So, because of that, I think I would really like to see you take the charrette on the road, and maybe we shouldn't call it a charrette, maybe, because it's not, you're right, it's not really a planning charrette, it's just a information feedback session on your three or four proposals, but I would like to see you take it out to the neighborhood. Because I think if you, if you have the neighborhood associations do a meeting, there are a lot of people who will come, because they'll be able to walk two or three blocks to see it, and to give you input, and I want to get as much input from the constituents as possible, because, you know, I knocked on every door a year ago and talked to people and heard a lot of different things about what their expectations are for a gymnasium, for those who wanted the gymnasium, and I want to make sure that all of that is captured, and that we're realistic about what the people really want. And my, just my impression off the top of my head is that, you know, the more services that are provided at the gymnasium, the more buy-in you get from people. I mean, I had people specifically tell me, they built a high-school size gymnasium, that was great, they built a Piney Branch size gymnasium, they wouldn't support it. And I mean, I was like, wow, okay, how come? Well, because I can't play basketball with the guys in a small gymnasium, that didn't work for me. So, I don't see any point in paying for a gymnasium. I mean, just as an example, other people ask, well, is there going to be a fitness center? Why doesn't the city have a fitness center? So, I would like to see you take it on the road.
I assume that if we did that, there would be cost, I mean, time implications to that. It probably wouldn't be possible for us to complete that by sometime in February.
When do we think that the consultant will have this dialogue with the liaison committee?
I'm not sure. They seemed open to working with us relatively shortly. Obviously, we've got holidays coming up, but they seem interested in working with us. One of the things that they've noted, and we know, is that they've done an awful lot of work already, so a lot of this is, you know, kind of culling out from what they've already gathered, and maybe consulting back with their cost estimator on several items, but not, not the kind of time that they've taken. And frankly, they did the big project in a very short period of time, and so, once they got started, and so I, I don't know the exact answer, but I think it would be relatively soon.
Terry?
Thank you. Regarding the roadshow, I'd just say I'm not enthusiastic with that, just because of the complexity involved in putting these together and hosting them, and based on our past experience of public forums, it can be challenging to get people to come out to these. We've seen that with our roadshow that we had for the council walking tours in each of the wards, that we do get some people, but not the numbers that we hope to get participating in these events. But I do think the public outreach is important, and I, as far as, you know, what we're looking for, you know, I'm willing to defer to the liaison committee to some degree in what we're asking for this other option, the fourth option, but I really feel skeptical that a downsized gym is going to garner the public support that's going to be needed to get the money together so that we can actually build something, even if it is, you know, minimal, the minimal price, it may not be as supportable as something that's a little bit more money. And then just one last comment about the public forum. I think that one of the difficulties that some people have is, when they hear gymnasium, they think basketball, and so I think it would be very helpful, as part of the mailing and part of the public forum, is to talk about the various types of programming that we can't do unless we do have a facility to do them in, things that we don't have within the spaces provided within our existing community center. So, I think, you know, we should talk about the other types of activities. I think we've over-talked about basketball, and I think it's become a kind of a one-for-one link between gymnasium and basketball, you know, when people hear gymnasium, they think basketball. And I think there are a lot of other programs, you know, there's programs for parents with little kids, you know, preschoolers during the daytime, there's programs such as aerobics for the seniors, many other programs that we could use a gymnasium for that we, that we can't do today, and so I think it would be helpful to itemize those in our mailing. Thank you.
Let me make a proposal that I think might incorporate a number of these things. If we could decide that the first item would be to go through this process with the consultant, so that we determine if another alternative is feasible or not, or whether there are tweakings that can be done to the ones on the table to make them less expensive, and that when that process is completed, that we send out a mailing if that's what the council wants, or do an extensive write-up in the newsletter, which would be another alternative, since the newsletter is mailed to everyone, that we do that, both putting out as much information as we have and inviting people to come to a public participation session, which will be listed in that mailing or newsletter along with the information, that during the time after the fourth, after the fourth option is determined to be feasible or not, between that point and the time that we have this public hearing, that any council member who would like to coordinate a information session with one of their community associations could get the help of staff in doing that, but it would be, it would be up to that council member to sort of, you know, set it up with the community association and, you know, do whatever they need to do, but that staff would make themselves available to actually be there and do the presentation, if that's feasible, but it would be up to the council member to sort of arrange it upfront, if we think we can do that, and if we feel that one of our neighborhood associations would appreciate it. And then, that the final thing would be a variation on the option that we're talking about in terms of the public presentation. I'm a little bit concerned that the staff alternative, when it was done with Maple Avenue, it was done with smaller groups of people. There weren't like 50 or 100 people all at one time, it was smaller groups of people, and I'm not sure if you have, you know, 50 people in a room, whether that's going to be as easy to do, because if the groups get, if the small groups get beyond a certain size, they don't work as well. I would like to work with the staff, perhaps, on maybe coming up with something, refining it a little bit, and would be interested in council suggestions on that, but that we decide that the timeframe would be first, maybe a month, say, by the end of January, if you think that's feasible for doing, exploring the fourth option. Is that feasible, do you think?
I think it would be, I can't promise that, but I think that would be worth the risk.
So, let's just say, and then, following that, that there be a period of time where either there's a mailing sent out or newsletter sent out, in either case, has full information on all the alternatives on the table at that point, and a date for a public participation event, and that that public participation event would probably have to take place in March, if we were sending this out in February, and that...
If we were doing what?
Sending this out in February.
The newsletter?
The newsletter or mailing or whatever, because you have to give people enough time to get it on their schedules, and then that, unless we think we could do it faster, like the end of February, by the end of February.
The newsletter comes out the middle of February?
Middle of February, okay. If we think we can do that.
The newsletter comes out at the beginning of February?
Right, yeah, it would come at the beginning of February, and I think, I think you could give enough time for it to happen in February.
All right, okay, that's a better idea, and that we do the public participation event as shortly after that as we can, and that it be, that it be followed fairly soon after the public participation event with a formal public hearing. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Colleen?
Will there be a mechanism, because I will do the roadshow, will there be a mechanism for getting those comments into the public record and providing any of those comments as much weight as the other input that we get?
I think that's a question for the city manager.
Absolutely, I mean, I think we save all that information.
Are we going to be able to count on staff working with a council member to have, I know there are probably four groups in my ward that they meet regularly, if, you know, is that too much? What's feasible?
I think there's a possibility, it depends how many neighborhood associations you're talking about, obviously, staff will do everything within its power to try to, you know, make sure that the public has an opportunity to participate, you know, if we're talking about doing, you know, I don't know how many associations all of you feel are active, but if we're starting to do 15 of these things in a very short period of time, you know, there is other city business that I have to make sure gets done, so I think what would be helpful is if you all can give some thought to what neighborhood associations you think you'd like us to attend, I can sit down with the staff, and we can sort of review that in terms of workload and some other things, and if there's any concern, can let you know.
I don't think there are 15 active ones.
Maybe we should look in the whole city, active?
Or who may want to be active on this issue.
Check out Victory Tower every month.
No, Victory Tower's quite active.
Ultra, Carroll Avenue.
Yeah, if you all could maybe give me that information, just email me tomorrow, and then I can sit down with the staff and kind of review that. I think we'll have to take some of the discussion this evening and sort of regroup this week, and obviously, there's not another council meeting, but we can get some information out to you via email.
Okay. Terry?
I'm not sure now what we're talking about. Are we talking about doing, are we talking about doing these things just at neighborhood associations?
No, no.
Are we talking about doing one at the city?
One that the, one...
In the council chambers?
Yeah, one here, not necessarily on a city, not on a city council night, more of a public participation event, but it would be followed by a public hearing before the city council, and that the neighborhood association roadshow events, or whatever you want to call them, would be basically the responsibility of the council member from that ward to set up, and they would be set up for those neighborhood associations that were interested in and worked with their council member to do that.
Okay, and the other thing I wasn't sure if I heard was, was someone suggesting that there was a cap on attendance for these things?
No, I was saying that the, for the big citywide event, the model that's being used was actually a model that was used with a smaller group, and so I would like the opportunity to work with the staff in maybe refining it before we get to that point.
Okay.
Is there anything else? I guess, does the council feel strongly about sending out a mailing as opposed to the newsletter?
The last time we talked about this, I know that Councilmember Barry and I were both interested in making this something that was put in front of people so that they were on alert, that this is a decision being made soon, and it's not just something that might be in the newsletter, which they might be able to look at that month.
I guess there's two aspects. One is, although the newsletters are addressed and are sent out, they do two things. One is, when they're taken to big apartment buildings, they're left in a stack, no matter what we do to try to talk the mail carriers into putting them into individual boxes, often they're left in a stack, and people may or may not pick them up. Also, the mail, the newsletters are sent to the 20912 zip code, plus some additional properties, so there are many areas outside of the city limits of Tacoma Park that get the city newsletter, that are not residents of Tacoma Park. When the bonding issue came before, and the mailing was done on that, it was targeted to a mailing list of households, and because it was a smaller item, we are hopeful that it was actually put in people's mailboxes. The other thing that can be done in a newsletter, or was done in the mailing, was the translation into Spanish, which we do feel is important.
Okay, thank you for that information. Does the council, how does the council want to go? Councilmember Austin Lane has made a case for why we should do a mailing, I think that staff's addition to that about the fact that the mailing gets to more people than newsletter does make an argument for the mailing, where does the council stand? I mean, it would cost us an additional $6,000, but it would probably get to more people. How does the council feel about that?
Mail.
Okay, all right, so we, I think we've made a decision on all the individual items, and we've set, put together a sort of a tentative schedule, yes?
One final thing that, and I'm glad that Ms. Ledlow brought this up tonight, and that is, you know, talking about alternative language brochures, I, it occurs to me that tonight we had a public hearing that was, there were no provisions for Spanish language, and yet there appeared to be a number of Hispanics in the audience. I think this is another public hearing that, or forum that we're anticipating, and I would like us to give some thought to how we can support alternative languages, and I think that's something we should think about, especially for any future public hearings we have, especially on such topics as the rent stabilization and the gymnasium.
One of the things that, as we design how some of these information sessions happen, is that there can be a group that's done in Spanish, or another language at somebody's request, and that could be convenient for getting a lot more detailed information for people who speak other languages.
Anything else? Well, you all have a good holiday, whatever holiday you celebrate, and we will see everyone again in the new year, and thank you to all the work that you've done, yes?
Just one other thing, tomorrow is the public hearing before the new Montgomery County Council on the gym, supplemental appropriation for $360,000. The mayor, Howard, and I will be attending, I'm not sure if others will come, but we'll let you know how that turns out. There'll be more discussions in January on that.
Okay, we are in recess until January the 8th.
Thank you.